...have a number of speakers and you'll have two minutes each. And the names that we have are Nikki Leeds, Miles Durfee, Deborah Guentina, Daniel Lindsay Burningham, and Yvonne Slater Rodriguez, Lalia Alia, Linda Williams, Citizen, Erin Andrews. Come in any order.
Thank you. The Cindy Martin investment model has problems with its data. Martin stated that California ranks 46th in the nation in per pupil tax money received. She used data that does not include the tax increases from Proposition 30. That's from Education Week's Quality Counts report. Just spending more tax money in exactly the same way does not increase student achievement. Currently, we have Saturday School that's being used and there is no student achievement being accomplished. And so Cindy states, "Let's have 80 more hours of school and we'll increase achievement." You're doing it now. You're making kids sit in a class on Saturday mornings and there is no increased achievement. Adjusted per pupil spending decreased, but the national ranking in achievement for California increased. Martin's plan to pump in more taxes and achievement will increase is the idea of an inexperienced superintendent. That's the thinking of an elementary school principal. I am skeptical. The annual financial report of California by John Chang, the state comptroller, stated that San Diego Unified did not provide full disclosure about its finances. Of course, Marnie Foster and John Lee Evans never questioned Martin's plan. The public is being scammed and I don't get to post my information using district resources, our taxpayer resources. Her statement that she knows everything that needs to be done to close the achievement gap, that's ludicrous. Her idea to pump more money just doesn't, it doesn't make sense. I do not understand how she got this 350 million. I read the California Department of Education Financial School Fiscal Services report and for 2013-2014, it stated that ADA tax money was $9,376. There are a lot of problems with this thing. This little PowerPoint, that's not what it's about. More money equals better education. That's not true. Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent, Board President, and members of the Board. I am Debbie Giaquinta, President of the San Diego Nice Guys, a local nonprofit that has been a part of San Diego since 1979, helping individuals who have fallen on tough times. I am here because through our work, we know the importance of empowering at-risk kids. I would like to bring to your attention a prestigious national recognition that was recently awarded to the Charter School of San Diego for work they are doing in changing the lives of our county's most disadvantaged students. The United States Secretary of Commerce named the Charter School of San Diego part of the Altus Network of Schools as the first charter school and the first secondary school in the nation to win the Malcolm Baldrige National Quality Award, the nation's highest presidential honor for performance excellence. Here are just some of the remarkable accomplishments recognized by this award. Eighty percent of Charter School of San Diego students passed the Casey despite oftentimes starting three to four grade levels behind. Over the past five years, student parent satisfaction levels have remained at almost 100 percent. Audits of the school's finance and operations have consistently shown business, sound business principles. Over the past five years, the Charter School of San Diego has sustained a student retention rate above 80 percent and for the instructional team, 80 to 90 percent for the past six years. This is especially significant. The high retention demonstrates a commitment to the organization, but more importantly, to the students they serve. I strongly believe staff retention has created an environment for students that re-engages them in their education, helps them to look beyond, and gain the confidence and determination necessary to succeed. Tonight, you will be voting on ADEO's renewal, a school within the Altus Network that uses the same award-winning model as the Charter School of San Diego. Please, as you vote, keep kids first. If I were in your seat, I would be proud to be working with the ADEO and Altus Schools as an organization that has been recognized by the nation's highest presidential award for performance excellence. We provide support to the kids, to the community, and to this district. I urge you to vote yes on the ADEO renewal. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Good evening. My name is Lalia Alali. I am a DILAC parliamentarian. I am standing before you on behalf of the DILAC raising a very important issue. The Council on American-Islamic Relations released a new study to understand how comfortable American Muslim students felt attending their schools and participating in classroom discussion and discover to what extent these students are subjected to bias. The finding of this study is as follows. Fifty-five percent of the students report being bullied based on their religious identity. For the female, like me, wearing the headscarf, the study said 29 percent reported being offensively touched by another student and 25 and 27 percent have been discriminated by teachers. We have one in five students was discriminated by a school staff member. Here are what students from Unified School District said. My teacher said, "You are not American enough to understand." Another student said, "They would say I am a terrorist and always ask me, 'How is the bomb you are working on?'" So my recommendation and the DILAC recommendation to the Board of Education and the Superintendent are as follow. First, schools should ensure teacher administrator receive the training on how to prevent bullying and harassment. Teachers should learn how to teach diverse multicultural and multi-ethnic classrooms so they can create an inclusive environment to all the students. Teachers should also be sensitive to lesson plan about 9/11 and Islam. And also, they have to be aware about the global politic that may impact American Muslims. I have here the report for all of you.
Thank you.
Good evening, President Foster, esteemed Board members, and Superintendent Martin. I am Linda Williams, retired teacher from the district, and I am proud and honored to be a, have Lalia Alali as a dear friend of mine for years. And I was aghast when I heard about the study that had been done that was talking about the kinds of mistreatment of Muslim students in our own district. So, we as a district are poised to be leaders in the nation, being proactive. We've declared ourselves a restorative district. We also have put the emphasis on having cultural proficiency. We are ready. We have what it takes. We know how to implement classroom circles. We know how to do peer mediation. We know how to do restorative justice. We're at the very beginning of getting those things together, but we could certainly become the leaders in the nation on doing what needs to be done to ensure that all students, and especially our Muslim students in this case, are treated with respect and dignity and compassion. And I wanted to also donate a book that Lalia told me about. I did not know about the book nor about this part of history. The Grand Mosque of Paris is a children's picture book, a story of how Muslims rescued Jews during the Holocaust in Paris. They created an underground railroad and got the Jews out safely, at risk to themselves, of course. So, this is just one concrete example of what our district could use, and I only have one copy of it, so I'll pass it down and whoever is the right person to take the ball and run with it, go for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I usually say this at the end, but I think it's appropriate to say now also, that we really appreciate the non-agenda public comments, and those comments are directed to the Superintendent to follow up and act on as well. So, thank you. Next.
Good evening, Superintendent Martin, President Foster, and members of the Board. My name is Erin Andrews, and I represent the Office of Senator Joel Anderson. And tonight, I'm here to invite you to the Senator's Holiday Open House that's happening on December 10th. It's an opportunity for the Senator to provide a legislative update, and it's a free public event and it's open to everybody, and I'm just here to invite you all to come and participate.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Hello. Good evening, Superintendent Martin, President Foster, and members of the Board of Education. My name is Miles Durfee, and I am the Managing Regional Director for the Southern California Region of California Charter Schools Association. As you know, you are currently the authorizing entity for 51 charter schools who serve 22,491 students, out of the nearly 130,000 that you serve jointly in San Diego Unified. While the number of charter school students this year increased by over 2,100, students, many people are still on the waiting list. And those students are looking to be either in traditional or charter schools in San Diego Unified. Tonight, the decisions you are about to make will directly impact over 3,200 charter school students who are either currently attending a charter school or would like to attend a new charter school option in the district. Your votes tonight will demonstrate whether students and parents truly have a choice, have a voice, and have real input into their child's education or not. Many of you have shared with me the importance of parent input and decision-making in our schools, and I agree with that. However, the ultimate input that parents have is to choose the school and the instructional program they desire for their children. The schools you are considering tonight represent the kind of diversity, innovation, and individualized instructional programs and demonstrate why charter schools remain popular and successful. Who could have thought, when charter schools were created 22 years ago in California, that tonight you would be discussing about a project-based learning program that teaches kindergarten students to learn piano, a credit recovery program for students who have dropped out or struggled in the traditional school environment, a school designed to directly connect students to farming and the earth? I urge you tonight to vote to approve parent choice in the community's voice. We ask you to approve all of the items submitted for renewals and material revisions, and while we cannot work to support City Farming School petition tonight, we urge you to work with them as you would have worked with the YMCA, Reality Changers, and the Outdoor Institute. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Honorable Board, Superintendent Martin, members of the public, and members of the Islamic Community, San Diego. Iman Taha, my very good friend at the Islamic Community. Now, let me begin by mentioning, I'm here tonight as a candidate running for District A of the San Diego Unified School Board. Regarding the jury coming in already with the verdict on the renaming of the Robert E. Lee School, which we'll talk about tomorrow evening, we'll get the results tomorrow evening, I ask you to be intellectually honest, intellectually truthful. Do you think for one moment that changing the name of the Robert E. Lee School is going to make, is going to have, any, is going to change the outcome of race relations in America? No. No. No, it will not. It will not change anything. You're trying to rewrite history, and you're trying to change history. Now, I hear, I'm a lifetime Democrat, and I hear they're trying to change the name of Woodrow Wilson, President Wilson, trying to take his name away from Princeton University. They call him racist. He's a Democrat. Do you think the woman that brought this forward, do you think she would have the courage to go before the Democratic Central Committee and tell them that she wants to change the name of a Democrat, Woodrow Wilson, at Princeton University? We need to be truthful and honest about this. It won't change a thing. You're just doing this, you're placating people for the wrong reasons. And I urge you, when it comes to a vote, if it should come to a vote for this board, don't vote for it. Keep history as it is. We learn.
Thank you very much for your comments.
We learn from history.
Thank you for your comments. Next.
Lindsay Burningham, President, San Diego Education Association. Sorry, I'm speaking off of a few different things because I arrived today to see that recommendations that were made Friday are now different, so hopefully my comments are amended to address the now amended recommendations. But I wanted to speak a little bit about the process for charter approval and some of the recommendations that are coming before you today. I hope that you will all trust in and follow the recommendations of our charter office staff. We have an amazing staff that puts in a lot of time, effort, research, and hours to bring forward recommendations to the Board that are based on their facts, but also based on their expertise that they bring to that department and the recommendations that they bring to you. So, first thing is urging you to listen to those recommendations, ask the questions you need to ask, but also trust in their expertise and their research that they've done. I wanted to speak to two particularly. First of all, in regards to the ADEO Charter School. I spoke last time and talked about the importance of our district following with what we stand for. And just this past year, our district sued Alpine Union, or Alpine District, the Alpine District, because they were authorizing a charter within our district. We are now looking at a charter operator, ADEO, wanting you to authorize charters that are outside of San Diego Unified. I really hope that we will follow the staff's recommendation, only authorize those charters that are within our district so that we are following the law that we are asking other districts to follow. Secondly, I wanted to talk about the recommendation with regards to Old Town Academy. Please look at recommendation number two, the approval, the conditional approval, based on ensuring that all of those employees in that charter are covered under the ERA. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, members of the Board. Good evening. My name is Nicole Leeds, and I'm a concerned parent for this reason. A California law was recently passed on June 30th, 2015. It was simply an attack on parental rights and the science behind it. SB 277, state imposed vaccinations. What you need to know about this new law, it's very important that we get some education around this because the school districts are going to be asked to implement this coming up July of 2016. No shot, no daycare, no school. Every child, every vaccine. Governor Brown has signed Senate Bill 277, the most stringent vaccine mandate ever. In 1983, a maximum of six vaccination doses were required. Now, in 2016 coming up, it will increase to 69 doses. This new law is set to go into effect on July 1st, 2016. Included in this vaccine mandate is an open-ended clause allowing the state of California to add any additional vaccines they deem necessary at any time. Families that do not comply with the one-size-fits-all vaccine mandate will lose their state constitutional right for a free education in public, private, and all charter schools. School-aged children not up to date on every mandated vaccine will be required to homeschool without options for classroom learning. SB 277 eliminates a parent's right to exempt their children from one, some, or all vaccines, a risk-laden medical intervention. The open-ended part of this clause is what I really want you all to take a look at when that comes across your desk. That's my concern. I have two children, one who's third year in college now, up in central California, one who's in middle school. I'm concerned about the middle schooler. Any future vaccines that are mandated, I'm very concerned. I'd like to see him get through to high school and, of course, onto college and make those decisions for himself. So, in closing, schools should not be the vaccine police. Schools are here to educate. Please, please have an open mind and an open heart when analyzing this new SB 277 law. Thank you so very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for allowing both of us to speak. We appreciate the opportunity. I have a full-time job. I work in aerospace as a corporate trainer, as well as an analyst. I have been for 25 years. I am not a hippie mom. I am a smart, educated, self-directed mother who cares for her child's health and safety, and my choice as a parent to decide for my child. We were both involved in the referendum, helping with Senator Anderson to get various town halls on board to educate the public, and it sounds like a number of people are on board and understanding what is coming. So, as an accountant, I'm here to talk about the money, because that's what a lot of us really care about. I want you to please consider looking at Fullerton as an option for your communication if you need a leveraging point to find out how they're doing it. They are going to practice civil disobedience. They are simply not going to enforce SB 277. They refuse, and when you consider what the cost is going to be to your district, I did some numbers, so, without trying to shake too much. I looked at various sites and I tried to get as much real information as I could from the San Diego Unified District. At 15 percent personal belief in exemption, those parents like myself, and we are exponentially growing, our community, are looking at having to homeschool. California Constitution states unequivocally, "I have a right to a public education." An AIDS ID, HIV-positive and Hep B student does not have to be vaccinated. They can come to school. But my child, who I don't want to have the flu shot because of the Marisol and the adjuvants, cannot. That's unfair. So, maybe you haven't really thought it through. I've been in a deep education for the last six months. My brain is stuck. I'm happy to come back and talk with anyone in private if you have questions. I'm at this point sort of a smee on this. But at, looking at 2015 and 2016 for the school year, with 32,000 kindergarten and seventh grade students that you had last year, regardless of the growth, and not even being able to look at who's coming in this coming year, at 32,000 of those students, at 18,000 revenue per child, you stand to lose $86 million if we do not return our students to your school district. Eighty-six million, and that is a very conservative estimate. So, I implore you to please do your own return on investment and look at the costs that you may be incurring and answer the, get ready to answer the question legally, where you're going to find that money. So, thank you. I hope I prepared you well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Looks like we don't have any other speakers, so that concludes non-agenda public comment. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. If you plan to speak on an agenda item and you have not already done so, you will need to grab one of the, you need to grab a speaker's form at one of the excesses, complete that, and then return that to our Board Officer. And also, just want to remind you that there's, all the time will be allotted for those in favor, and I'm just kidding. You'll have 20 minutes, 10 for each side, but I think that that's going to work out very well this evening. Okay. So, I would like to, okay, thank you. I would like to call the December 1st, 2015 Board Meeting to order with all Board members present, and I'd also like to share some information with you before we-
We adopt the agenda.
We adopt the agenda. New Board Officers will be elected next week prior to the general Board Meeting. This means that tonight's Board Meeting is the last meeting that I will lead and preside over as President of the Board. That said, leadership and setting the direction for the second-largest school district in the state, eighth-largest in the nation, with 14,000 employees and 130,000 students that we serve, is more than the fundamentals of education. It is also understanding the dynamics of various cultures and various families that you can only learn through experience. My experience has caused me to be steadfast with my focus on equity, access, inclusion, and educational excellence for all, not some, but all. Some of my notable efforts and accomplishments include San Diego Unified through diversity's work and focus on cultural proficiency, teacher pipeline, ethnic studies, including women's studies, improving discipline policies where positive behavior supports, restorative practices, and trauma-informed schools establishes how San Diego Unified School District supports its students. Elevating long-term English language learners as a priority in this district, including native speakers with long-term low academic language skills. Equity and access in sports through better representation and relationship with CIF, and expanding middle-college opportunities where students can take college courses on their school campuses with greater all, greater overall collaboration with San Diego Unified School District. And of course, exposing, also increasing collaboration, exposure, and opportunities with the trades and apprenticeship programs for our students with Trustee Barrera. This means real opportunity when we talk about the trades. I'm just going to add. When we talk about college and career, and we talk about a career for some students that choose not to go to college immediately, where they can begin a career starting at $17 to $20 an hour with benefits, that creates and means real opportunities. So, it has been my pleasure and privilege to increase the exposure and opportunities and collaborations with the trades. Finally, when I took office, I quoted Dietrich Bonhoeffer, who said, "The test of morality of a society is how well we treat our children." And I would submit to you tonight that we are at this Board Meeting because we believe the moral imperative of yesterday, today, and tomorrow remains the well-being of all of our children, not some. And now, I'd like to call the December 1st Board Meeting to order again with all Board members present, and do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Okay. Please vote.
President Foster?
Yes.
I'd also like to acknowledge your presidency and the work that you've done and the service you provided. We've opened a, my year on the Board has been one of opening this district to increase transparency and accountability and increasing communication. And I just want to specifically reference the number of resolutions that we passed within this last 12 months under your leadership that acknowledged diversity and support inclusion, and that included the continuing effort for restorative practices. Our work we did with the PTA on climate change is a children's issue, cultural competencies, ethnic studies, civics learning, anti-bullying. So, I think we've been moving forward in a number of areas, and it was to your leadership and guidance that we've done that, and want to thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you. And so, now we're going to start with our Operational Matters F1, Proposition S and Z. Superintendent Martin, would you like to introduce?
Yes, thank you, President Foster. I'm going to invite up Lee Dolgoff for this presentation. It's our Prop S and Z Bond Program Semiannual Update. You can join us up here on the dais. It's about improving school facilities, quality schools in every neighborhood, and it's a semiannual financial status report and update. Thank you, Mr. Dolgoff. I know there's not a lot of people out there that are interested in hearing the Prop S and Z update, so I'm going to try to make this quick and painless. Do you have the PowerPoint?
Lee, I just wanted to share with the board that we do have a speaker on this item. And I'd like to... And I think that's why Citizen stood up and allowed her to speak.
I don't want to hear a quick and painless report. I want to hear a thorough report, Mr. Dergaroff. The restrooms are still stinky with rust. Wooden stairs are crumbling. Roof's leak, and you're poised to approve spending millions of dollars of taxpayer money on these buildings. My concern is lease on San Diego High School. In 10 years, you have to vacate San Diego High School. That was the court settlement that was made between the city of San Diego when it allowed the school district to continue to use Balboa Park land for the school. I read the court settlement. It's foolish to pour millions of dollars more and more into a school that must be vacated by San Diego Unified in 10 years. You should be planning for that. Now, I can't believe it, but actually Barrera came up with a good idea for this. He didn't do it with process and procedure and following the Brown Act, but his idea to build a high school on Memorial Middle School property is a good idea, and that's a solution to this problem. In 10 years, that property reverts to the people of San Diego by our city constitution. And no board member today should be voting to approve pouring millions and millions of dollars into San Diego High School when you're going to have to vacate that property in 10 years. That was the legal settlement that was agreed to. You better be planning for it. You don't want to waste our money. People are never going to vote for another taxpayer bond issue if you do this. Thank you.
Okay.
So, this is an update on construction progress and financial status of our bond programs, as well as our looking forward and our plan to improve facilities over the next couple of years. We opened Jonas Salk Elementary School successfully on September 8th, and you can see there's a picture of one of our kindergartners looking forward to the first day of school. In the bottom corner photo, there's a picture of Dr. Salk and Superintendent Martin and our principal, Deirdre Hardson, at the dedication. We have nearly $500 million in renovation projects in the planning and design phases currently. $175 million of construction is underway at 17 schools currently. 100 major projects have now been completed, including new classroom buildings and career technical education facilities like the one that pictured here, Claremont High Academy of Business. This is a picture taken at the dedication of 10,000-square-foot facility that houses our finance-centered program of studies, which students learn about stocks and bonds, how they're traded. It gives students a real-life experience of working in a simulated environment of an investment house or trading floor. Classroom technology, we had, you know, the five-year phased I-21 plan is now complete, and all students have access to devices, Wi-Fi, Promethean boards. The first year of student device refreshes is complete, and we're continuing to maximize federal E-rate grant funds for technology and technology infrastructure. This is a summary of our air conditioning project. I presented a detailed update on the status on November 10th, so I'm just kind of kind of breeze through that. Also, the board on the 10th approved an expedited air conditioning plan, and we've already started the engineering design approval on that board-approved project. The plan's going to include classrooms, education, and administrative spaces, so all spaces air-conditioned. I recently met with the Division of State Architects to discuss the project, and we're going to be submitting plans to DSA starting in the first quarter of 2016 with construction contracts and bidding following. One thing I want to emphasize about air conditioning is that it... This installation and associated electrical upgrades are heavy construction and very similar to whole-site modernizations. We're going to work to minimize the impacts on teaching and learning during this... During this whole process, but it's going to impact a lot of classrooms and a lot of schools, and we're going to be... We'll work after hours and work to minimize disruption, but there will be... There will be some impacts on and inconveniences at school sites. But the pain will be worth the gain. Sustainability of solar... Gosh, there's a big meeting in Paris about sustainability going on right now with all the world leaders. The initial phase of our project starts in 2016. We'll be installing photovoltaic panels at eight high-energy use schools. We're looking to do primarily car mount... Or carport and ground mount installations, and you can see the PV carports at Jonas Salk as an example. We advertised an RFQ already early in November, and the next step is to do the RFP to the qualified proposers. We're going to be utilizing design-build, and we'll be competing for best value among the selected group of qualified contractors in accordance with Government Code Section 4217. We're also going to be studying the feasibility of implementing an energy storage battery system to tie in with the solar to reduce our peak demand charges. The second phase of the solar will happen in 2017, and it will impact the other 12 schools, and the total project is estimated to cost about $40 million and generate about 10.5 megawatts. Let's see here. This is sort of a breakdown of our total expenditures to date, a billion dollars of expenditures. You can see most of the work is in the categories of site modernization and classroom technology and technology infrastructure. The modernization also includes ADA, health and safety upgrades, new buildings to replace Last year, we started a five-year plan to install new turf fields at elementary and middle schools that lacked fields, and we've opened new fields at Fulton, Dana, Knox, Emerson, Loma Portal. This is an aerial photo of the Weyer Field that supports our special needs students. Since 1948, we've partnered with the city to develop a joint-use grass and turf fields throughout San Diego. Today, we've got... We have 75 of those agreements, including Jefferson, Language Academy, and Roosevelt. Seven more projects are in the design or construction phase, including Montgomery Middle and Wegaforth Elementary. City and district staff are currently working on GDP plans for fields at CPMA, Coverly, Gage, Horton, Spreckles, and Stanley. And recently, we've actually met with the city, and we're working to expand our joint-use partnership, and we've identified together 10 more candidates for future city and district joint use. And you can see the... On Attachment 2 of the package, you can see a summary of the five-year plan to turf 53 schools. Superintendent Martin and Dr. Evans and I met with the mayor's office staff a few weeks ago to talk about expanding that partnership. Charter schools. We, you know, we have a charter school facilities program within a program, really. It's funded by the $350 million pro-rata share of Prop Z funds that are utilized, allocated for charter schools. Right now, there are 18 charter school projects that are approved and underway, including air conditioning. And if you combine that with the $300 per charter school student to site discretionary funds, we've allocated... Or the board has allocated a total of $252.7 million in projects to provide better facilities for our charter school students. As you can see from this aerial photo, construction activities are underway at O'Farrell Community School. This is one example of a project where we're adding facilities to support the high school program there. Communications and stakeholder engagement are a big part of the program. We value the input and participation of parents, students, teachers, community members in the design development process, and we've had 261 site master planning and design task force meetings to date. This is a dedicated photo of the groundbreaking for the Crawford Field. Let's skip the slide here. We have had a lot of success in terms of business outreach. Our EBA participation from January through September is 36... Over 36%. Our business outreach team is working really, really hard to improve, especially minority business participation and women-owned business participation this year. We set our goals really high, and you can see we're exceeding our goals in both minority-owned business and women-owned business subcategories, and we're close to meeting our goals in the disabled veteran and small business categories. And we're greatly exceeding market capacity in all of the EBE categories. One of the ways we do that, this, is with through our micro project program, and you can see we've already, just in the first three months of this fiscal year, we've awarded $86,000 in contracts. Our six-year partnership with the Building Trades and Carpenters Union has been a great success, and under the PSA, we've employed 5,746 workers on 68 projects since October 27th, 2009. 27% of all the workers that live in our targeted ZIP codes, and the real key to that is union referrals. Union referrals from targeted ZIP codes have amounted to four out of every five workers that are on our projects. 80% of our workers come from those union... From targeted ZIP codes come from union referrals. And for transparency, all of the ZIP code and maps and data are posted on our website. Looking at the overall status of the program, this is a $5.1 billion program, including state matching funds. We've received $1.36 billion in total revenue, and our expenditures to date are $1 billion... $1.05 billion. We expended $306.7 million in FY 1415, and already in FY 1516, we're at $31 million expenditures. And our fiscal year 1415 bond financial and performance audit results are positive this year, and the audits will be presented at the next board meeting on December 8th. This is a... Our plan to implement the next phase of our bond program is included on Attachment 1. It details the program plan from 2015 through 2021, and includes the accelerated air conditioning program the board approved on the 10th of November. We're going to continue to maximize state matching funds and E-rate grants. It includes the board and superintendent priorities and a pro-rata share for charter schools during that period, which totals $170.2 million. District and... District staff facilitates the Prop Z Citizens Oversight Committee and the charter school facilities advisory committees. Both committees are functioning well. The first group of charter school projects was approved back in... On February 4th, 2014, and we approved... The board approved another group on June 3rd of 2014, and then July 30th, 2015, a third group of projects was approved. The ICOC and its three subcommittees are also functioning well. They meet regularly, review audits, and produce quarterly and annual reports, and all 11 of the ICOC positions are appointed. And Andy Berg will be up next to give you kind of an update on what's going on with the ICOC. Our finance team, Jenny Selkeld and the team, were very... Led a very successful effort to improve our bond ratings. We got a AAA from Fitch. Kroll gave us a AA+ and Moody's a AA II, which was upgraded. This is really going to help save taxpayers a lot of money over time, and we'll continue to issue bonds at the least cost to taxpayers. As district issued $31.7 million of Prop S bonds in June of this year, and we expect to issue another $100 million by early January. In October, we issued $154 million in short maturity Prop Z bonds, and in early January, we'll issue $370 million in long-term Prop Z bonds and another $100 million in long-term green bonds. And looking forward, we expect to issue approximately $500 million in Prop Z proceeds every two years using current interest bonds, and about $100 million in Prop S proceeds every other year. The long-term bonds obviously are used to fund longer mature... Long-term capital projects. Short-term bonds are used to fund technology and other short-useful life equipment, furniture equipment. We're also looking forward to 2016 statewide bond that will help provide additional matching funds for our local projects. And this is an aerial photo of Hamilton Elementary School kindergarten building. So, I'll close with... This is a photo of the students and staff celebrating dedication at Salk Elementary, and my recommendation, staff recommendation, to adopt the attached resolution that approves revised Prop S and Prop C project plan and the projects undertaken pursuant to the Prop S and Z program as shown on Attachments 1 and 2. I'm here to take your questions and comments, and I appreciate your support.
Okay. Do I have a second? Okay. Any comments or questions, discussion? No? If not, can we please vote?
You did a great job.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you. Okay. The next item is an information item. Superintendent Martin? We're going to have... Okay. Andy Berg? Yes. Come on up. I didn't know if she wanted to say some words before you came up, but we're ready for you.
Okay. I appreciate that. Ready for you to. First off, congratulations on getting rid of this gig, and thank you for your leadership over the past year.
Thank you, Andy.
I think all the students definitely appreciate it. My name is Andy Berg. I'm the chair of the Citizens Oversight Committee and Departmented Citizens Oversight Committee. I've been... This is my third year, I guess, doing this, so I'm glutton for punishment as well. Want to just talk a little bit about what we're doing. Mr. Dergaroff covered a bunch of it. We do have three committees: finance, which meets bimonthly, construction and exec, which meet monthly, and a full committee, which meets monthly. So, we are going over these things very often. We issue, as required, an annual report to the public, as well as quarterly reports, which are not required, but we think are important to keep people informed. We recently received the audit for fiscal year 1415. Very happy that the auditor had no concerns. It was an unqualified audit. Really, there've been minor issues over the years, very minor. This is the first one with none, absolutely zero. They said everything is being done according to the law and the way it should be, and I think that's very good news. I want to go down just the list of things I said I would talk about, so keep me on topic here, but the district school facilities condition. We've actually reached a point now where we've plateaued it, and it should start coming down now over all the things you saw that Mr. Dergaroff said we're going to be spending money on. That should start now improving the condition of the schools, and that's a good thing. The thing I want to remind you, and I promised I would do this every six months, you're responsible with general fund money to keep up the ongoing maintenance. You know, there is going to be people... Teachers are going to come ask for more money. They should probably get it. Charter schools are going to want to be charter that are going to cost money, and they probably should be too. I'll be the only person going up here every six months saying, "Spend money to maintain the infrastructure of the schools," because if you don't, every dollar you don't spend to keep something maintained will cost you $2 to fix later, and then you won't have money for teachers' raises and charter schools and everything else. So, please, it's not sexy. No one else is asking you to do it, but keep that in the budget every year. Definitely appreciate that. And when we're doing the order of these projects, unless there's a really good reason, and there are some, sometimes there's money from other sources that can only go to one particular school. But if that's not the case, fix the schools and disrepair first. Pretty simple. Look at that FCI inverse order. Fix them in that order. Said we'd talk about swimming pools, just because that's been on the agenda for all time. Nothing's changed, really, in six months, so we're still just waiting to see what happens. As I mentioned the last time, I had some meetings with your attorney. You can do this legally. We know you can. You can also probably tweak it and do it not legally, so we'll be making sure that it gets done the right way. Follow her advice, and I think you'll be fine. Charter schools, another reminder here, couldn't have been more fitting with everybody in the crowd, but there is a commitment to spend a pro-rata share of the money on charters. You doing it? Please keep doing it. I know we got a lot more money coming in, and that's great, and I see more of that money going to charter schools. Really good news. They're part of the community as well and need to be treated as such. The last big topic I want to talk about, and this is important, the economy's changing again. Those of you who've been around long enough remember 2006, 2007, construction inflation was, you know, double digits every year. People were freaking out. How are we going to get this stuff done? 2008, 2009 hit, and it was like... They're part of the community as well, and need to be treated as such. The last big topic I want to talk about, and this is important, the economy's changing again. Those of you who've been around long enough remember 2006, 2007, construction inflation was, you know, double digits every year. People were freaking out, how are we going to get this stuff done? 2008, 2009 hit, and it was like, whoa, this is awesome. We hit a recession, and all of a sudden, your estimates are 30% too high, the bids are coming in low, life's great. It's almost 2006, 2007 again. So don't be surprised if your engineers' estimates are a little behind the times, that's just what they are. The reason you were getting 30% below bid before was not because, you know, they were below, it's just they were behind the times then, and prices were dropping. They're going to start coming up again. You're not the only game in town anymore, unfortunately. There's a lot of work out there, and supply and demand really does work. So you will see higher numbers, your staff knows that, they're working on that, they understand what needs to be done, but just so you see it, if they bring something to you that's a little bit over budget, don't be freaking out. It's the way it's going to be for a couple of years. The last thing on my thing was a comment about media coverage, and I've decided to take the advice of my mom, that says, "If you don't have anything good to say, just don't say anything at all," and we'll pass on that. But I will close with just saying, right now, it's a very well-run program. I mean, you really do have a great staff out there, do a fantastic job. We were all very happy to see the credit rating go up, that's huge. Lee kind of just brushed that over, but you're talking about percentages on the bond that could be as much as a half a percent or 1% less on the interest rate, and you're talking billions of dollars. That's a lot of money at 1% interest difference, even a half a percent difference interest. So that's huge. Really happy to see that because of that, we were able to get more money, too. Get more money quicker, which means the air conditioning gets done. I know that makes some of you very happy. Also, we get some hard construction modernization done quick. I'm sure the people at Crawford High School and some of the other places are very happy to see those being moved up as well, because as one of the speakers said, you know, there is still stuff falling apart, but we're trying to spend $5 billion over 20 years. Not everything can be fixed in one day, and I wish sometimes the public would understand that, but it's human nature to want your school done today, and I think we all understand that. I do want to tell you, even as things are going good, though, we are still watching. You know, Miles, who spoke before, he's on our committee, there are some others that are really dedicated to making sure that, first off, the projects are done according to the voter's guide. That's obviously been a huge issue. We asked the auditor to look at that, and they came back and said it was, you know, being done, which is great, but that's very important. That was the promise to the voters, to do what we said we would do. Not necessarily the order every citizen wants it done in, but to get it all done that we said we would do it. We also want to make sure that the money's being spent appropriately, change orders aren't running rampant, we're not getting scope creep, another problem, another admonition to you folks up there. Don't ask for things, don't let your principals ask for things that aren't on the guide. That's how you end up spending all the money before you finish all the projects. Stick to what's on there. So anyway, bottom line, so far, so good. We're 20% in, there's still another $4 billion to spend, and we'll be watching. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to say thank you again, Andy, for your leadership. Yes, thank you. So that was an information, oh, yes.
Yeah, I would like to just extend, extend that compliment, compliment Lee and his staff and the committee for a number of things. $5.1 billion is a lot of money, and we want to thank our taxpayers for doing that, and they put a lot of trust in us to handle that money wisely, and I believe that the department, along with a number of people in the committee, have done an excellent job with that. Now, if you think about the numbers, we've got 30,000 instructional spaces, that's 6,000, more than 6,000 classrooms in 200 schools. And the effort they've made is not to do it alone, their effort to be collaborative, to work as a team, to listen to all voices, to reach out to all stakeholders, and they backed it with high integrity and with expertise. They've had the willingness to listen and to incorporate suggestions when possible. They're focusing on the state-of-the-art upgrades, they're including energy efficiency into their programs, they're looking at sustainability, and the joint use projects that we have in collaboration with our corporate partners and our government agencies have been a major plus for us, as well as for them. We've, are partners with charter schools, and for the first time ever, I think, the charter's joined with the district to pass a bond, and that's where we got the $5.1 billion. And there's a slice out for charterers to work with, the $350 million, that has benefited them tremendously, and want to support that. Our work also with labor and the building trades, our PSA has been very, very positive effort, and it's been due to a terrific oversight by our committee. We have excellent audit reports, and our AAA bond rating, that definitely reflects the good work that everyone is doing. I just want to give a big shout-out and cheer for the work that you're doing.
Thank you. Okay. So our next item for action is F3, and that's the City Farming Academy of San Diego. Superintendent Martin, did you want to?
Thank you, President Foster. I'm going to invite up our charter school staffs. Susan Park and Deidre Walsh will be, we have several charter items tonight, and charter staff has been working diligently to prepare each item, and she practically needs a cart to come up here with all of her items. So Susan will help, I'm not sure which ones you're each presenting, but I know you're here together as a team, and thank you for all the work you did to prepare for tonight's meeting.
While they're getting settled, did someone want to make a motion, since this is an action item?
Thank you. Deidre Walsh, the manager, and myself, Susan Park, the program manager. Today, we have, I believe, seven action items covering eight schools, and so you're seeing the entire charter office before you, because we're going to tag-team a little so that we can be sure to answer any questions you have and present the information in a comprehensive manner. So the first item, F3, is the City Farming Academy of San Diego. It's a new petition, and Deidre Walsh will present the information to you.
Great, thank you. Good evening. Item F3 is an action item on the petition to establish a new charter school, City Farming Academy of San Diego. The school proposes to be a K-8 school, beginning with grades TK through 3 in their first year, and they plan to operate at the CROCK Center. Their focus will be on urban farming and project-based learning. The petition that was submitted has been thoroughly reviewed, and as part of our review process, we hold an interview with the lead petitioner. So we have done that, and you'll see, as detailed in the recommendation, staff has identified multiple concerns with the petition. California Education Code 47605 permits denial of a petition if the board makes factual findings specific to the petition, that the charter school presents an unsound educational program, that petitioners are demonstrably unlikely to successfully implement the program set forth in the charter, the petition does not contain the required number of signatures, or the petition does not contain reasonably comprehensive descriptions of required elements. I'm going to go through the findings that we've made, but as mentioned, we did find some concerns with the petition, and so staff is recommending that the board deny the petition and adopt the written factual findings that are included. The first finding that we have is based on the signatures within the petition. We don't believe it contains the required number of signatures. Our concerns revolve around, there were, as we understand it, a number of people who helped write the petition, various revisions were made to the petition at various times by various parties. So we've been unable to confirm, or have confirmed by the lead petitioner, that the petition that was submitted to the district is the petition that the parents and the teachers signed in support of. So that was one concern. We're also concerned with the teacher's signatures. Six teachers signed the petition when we did our signature verification for those teachers. Five of them, for whatever reason, were either not eligible to teach the first year at the school, or were not meaningfully interested for various reasons. One of them told us if the school wasn't going to offer STIRS, the person was not interested. One mentioned that she has a credential that is not eligible in the first year of the school's operation. So there were various reasons, but in the end, five of the six teachers who signed the petition were ineligible or not interested. One of the big concerns we have is that the petition does not address STIRS or PIRS within it. As we understand it, the school is not going to be offering STIRS for the teachers. We think that may have an effect on the quality of the school and the staff that they attract, and the ability to retain the teachers. Also, within that, it's not clear within the petition which staff members will be covered by Social Security and retirement systems. It mentions eligible employees, but it doesn't specify who the eligible employees are. Our next concern, petitioners being demonstrably unlikely to successfully implement the program is based on their projected enrollments. They seem to have a overly optimistic projection within the petition, and you'll see in Table 1, we've done a historical chart of the schools that have submitted petitions with us and their K through 3 first-year operations. You'll see that city farming is significantly higher number-wise and percentage-wise over the historical data that we have in the chart. So we are concerned, anytime there's a large overly optimistic projection of enrollment, it impacts the finances at the school. So we are concerned about that large over-projection. Finding number four, we believe the petition presents an unsound educational program for the pupils to be enrolled at the charter school, because the school has presented an unmanageable academic calendar. They are starting, they plan to be with the district in the first year for special education, so they'll be in our SALPA, which means our staff would serve the special ed students and be assigned to that school. Their calendar, from what we can see in the petition, they start before our calendars do, and they have this large extended break from November 21st through January 2nd. So their calendar doesn't align with any of our current calendars, or calendars that would be in effect for that year. So there may be some issues with staffing, as they do intend to be in the district SALPA during their first year. Finding number five is a financial finding. We believe demonstrably unlikely to successfully implement the program, because the school has presented an unrealistic financial and operational plan. Some of the funds have been overestimated, their educational protection account, they included in the budget for fiscal years 1920 and 2021. However, those funds, we understand to expire at the end of fiscal year 2018-19. So they've included two years' worth of funds that we don't believe will exist. So there's a total overestimation for those two years of about $156,000. Also, the charter school facility grant program, commonly referred to as SB 740, where state funds are provided to charter schools that are eligible, schools are awarded $750 per unit of classroom ADA, or up to 75% of annual facilities' rent and lease costs. You choose the lesser of the two, that's how you project your budget, and it appears from their budget that petitioners have selected the higher of the two amounts rather than the lower. There's also a concern with the projected amount for special education contribution rates. The current rate for 15-16 for the district, which they do plan to be with us, is $1,613 per student. They have estimated the contribution rate in their budget at $1,300 per student. So they've underestimated that expense by almost $47,000. Finding number six, petitioners are demonstrably unlikely to successfully implement the program set forth in the charter, because the budget is not fiscally viable. The budget that they have contained in the petition shows a negative $40,000 ending fund balance in their startup year, and we can't have a negative ending fund balance for that. Finding number seven, also a financial finding related to the cash flows that are contained within the petition, reflects a lack of understanding of receipt of revenues and expenditures. They have, for fiscal year 15-16, receipt of in lieu of property taxes is shown in October, January, and March through June. However, per ed code, in lieu of property taxes is transferred to charter schools in monthly installments. They've also referenced receivable sales in their first two years of operation. Charter asset management has committed $750,000 in financing for fiscal year 16-17, but the petitioners have not provided any evidence that substantiates the funding in the second year of operation. We've only seen it for the first year. Also, the documentation that is included does not detail any fees or rates related to that financing. And without that financing, the school will have a negative cash flow in the first two years of operation. Finding number eight, petitioners are demonstrably unlikely to successfully implement the program because the school is unfamiliar with the content of the petition as it relates to instructional minutes, conflict of interest policies, bylaws, and governance. They have, within the petition, they've overestimated the daily instructional minutes for the various grade levels. They included some break times that should not have been included in the calculations for the instructional minutes. We also noticed that the bylaws and the conflict of interest codes are all in draft form. They have not been signed by anyone representing the school, and there's no indication that the bylaws have been approved by the City Farming Academy of Directors. Same is true of the conflict of interest policy. We did learn at the capacity interview that we held with the petitioners, that the Board of Directors for the school has not been appointed. So it raised an additional concern that the plans and decisions being made on behalf of the school, there is no board directing those, so we're not sure who is approving or deciding those actions. And lastly, finding number nine, it's not clear from the petition that petitioners have done their due diligence relating to animals at public schools within the city limits. The petition makes multiple references to having chickens and goats within the school, and we did find a reference to zoning, that petitioners would comply with zoning, but there's nothing specific to show that they have thoroughly investigated, that they will be allowed to have the animals that they have selected in their petition, and if so, you know, is there any limitations or restrictions to them, or public nuisance laws that go along with it? So it appears as though that has not been fully investigated. So based on those concerns, district staff has recommended that the board adopt these factual findings in support of a denial of the petition.
Questions from board members?
Deidre, did this petition go through the, sort of, the peer review process, where we've experienced charter leaders taking work out of it?
Yes. So as part of our process, the written petition is distributed to multiple people in multiple departments, so there's a lot of different departments weighing in on it. And then we also, as part of our interview process, we have charter leaders involved in that process, and so they are able to give some input and feedback on the petition.
And what kind of feedback did you get from the experienced charter leaders?
Overall, there was a concern about the petition. They expressed concerns about the retirement systems, they expressed concerns about the special ed pieces, and overall, some concerns about the educational instructional program.
And so some of that feedback is incorporated into your analysis?
Yes, yes.
Are there, go ahead. Right, okay. So we do have public speakers, and, did I just close any? Yeah, and I have some extras, too. So I have Therese Fitz Randolph, William Tall, Linda Williams, and then I have a few more as well. And you have, the total, right. So you're going to have a total of 10 minutes, but let me finish sharing who all is listed. Rob Campbell, Ms. Brown... Rob Campbell, Ms. Brown, Ms. Scott, Jeff S., okay, I couldn't read the writing, I'm sorry. Daniel and Joselle Espinosa. And you'll have a total of 10 minutes, and you can decide what order you'd like to speak in.
Okay. I'm Therese Fitz Randolph and the lead petitioner, and I wanted to address the nine concerns from the staff. We collected signatures from mid-June through September. The only things added to the petition right before submitting were copies of the parent and teacher signatures, as well as copies of the letters of support from various local leaders. Although proofreaders finished their work on September 30th and the petition was submitted on October 2nd, the substance of the charter stayed essentially the same from June 15th until we submitted. In regard to teacher signatures not being valid, we consulted with our attorney, and they stated that it is the intention of the signer at the time they signed, not the answers that they gave during the charter office phone call that make their signature valid. Regarding staff retirement systems, we consulted our financial advisors when choosing the most fiscally responsible route regarding retirement plans for our staff. With the contribution rates of CalSTIRS going up to over 19% in the next few years, we felt financially irresponsible for us to use CalSTIRS and try to stay within budget. We opted to be fiscally conservative and chose a 403B and federal withholding for all of our staff, as is common practice amongst charter schools all over California. Regarding an unrealistically high enrollment projection, actually, we feel it's conservative. Our program is exponentially different than other charters that have opened in the last few years. With 650 Facebook followers and a support, excuse me, a support of a large agricultural community, including the Farm Bureau, County Ag, and 4-H, who are at the ready to start promoting our school, we are confident we will reach our enrollment goals. We've already been contacted by parents with infants who are wanting to get on a waiting list to start at our school. Regarding an unmanageable calendar in regard to special education, since we only open one short week before San Diego Unified and close only two weeks after, isn't this a minor issue? Something could be easily resolved with an MOU. Since we will be joining another SELPA in year 2, is this really that large an issue that since it pertains to only one year of special education? Regarding an unrealistic financial and operational plan, our budget was prepared by EdTech, and the VP of Client Management asked me to read the following to you. Regarding the education protection account, these fiscal years conservatively assumed zero COLA from year 3. Even if Prop 30 were not renewed by voters, the $200 ADA EPA assumption would likely be filled by state aid and would not change the overall revenue assumption. SB 740, the note for this revenue stream indicates that this grant assumption includes rent and improvements. The calculation includes building repairs and maintenance, as well as sites and improvements of sites under capital outlay. The revenue is not overestimated. Additional eligible expenses were not used in the calculation, and the revenue assumed was more conservative. District SELPA contribution is now higher than in our budget, but even with this additional expense, the budget still balances. Number 6, regarding the statement that the budget's not fiscally viable, the startup year shows expenses before July 1st, 2016. Some items will be purchased before the school fiscal year starts. The first-year audit will include audits of the startup and first year of operation, where both years will be combined and reported as one. The budget also did not include the public charter school grant program revenue, which is now available, we've applied for. Regarding cash flow, San Diego Unified School District does generously pay out its in lieu of property tax before nearly all districts. Since the districts are not backfilled by the state until the special apportionments are received in October and January, most do not pay new charters their in lieu of property tax until then. We assumed the conservative scenario rather than more cash coming up front. Number 8, regarding the issue with instructional minutes, conflict of interest, bylaws, and governance. Yes, there was an error in the calculation of instructional minutes. However, with the error removed, we are still easily over the minimum number of required instructional minutes. The capacity interview included poorly veiled attempts to accuse Bill of making a profit off of a school beyond the nursery, but since neither Bill nor I will be employees of the school and will serve only as board members, we shall file our statements of economic interests, and they will be on file with the school as a matter of public record, so we're not sure about the conflict of interest concerns. As for concerns that we don't have our board in place, we do have a plan regarding our board. We have our board members chosen, and if approved tonight, it is our plan to cede our board during the week of January 4th, 2016. Regarding chickens and goats in the city of San Diego, of course, we looked into this, and the board, I'm sorry, the city ordinance changed in January of 2012, allowing for citywide restrictions to be lifted on people having chickens and goats. Our council checked with San Diego Unified in the fall of 2014 regarding farm animals on campus, and there were no policies about having farm animals on campus, which isn't surprising, because why would you assume there'd be farm animals in a city? But we found that there weren't any regulations or restrictions about that. So if there's nothing there, then I'm not sure that there's something to be enforced. But we'd be open to, if there's a code with San Diego Unified that needs to be enforced regarding farm animals, we'd be very open to working with the district on that. We don't even plan to have farm animals through year 1. We have baby chicks coming in the spring, and after our first year at the CROC, we've actually been invited to become part of another nonprofit organization that has four acres on the corner of Euclid and 94, the earth lab property, to locate our school permanently with them. So, because they'll have ample room, the farm animals will have ample room, so will the kids. So, thank you. We hope you approve our charter tonight.
She does her homework. Anyways, hi, I'm going to read my speech tonight because I have a hard time remembering things lately. Hi, honorable school board members. Well, you've heard our story, you listened to our reasons, you saw and heard from some of the many people who love to see this unique school happen. I thank you for the time that you see, for your time, to see what we have really created from the beginning. A wonderful idea to help, idea, and the help from only very, from the very, only very successful school in the country who's embraced the concept of learning. Not just with the school's help, but with the few dedicated persons who made up our team, and many people have supported us through the way. Yes, a wonderful team of full-time people in the school system who spend countless hours devoted to different parts of the teaching and have, devoted to a different form of teaching, and having the kids of San Diego achieve such benefits from it. What is in it for, what is it, what is, what is in it for us? We have been asked sometimes in not such nice ways, but here it is. Hoping that you see, you've seen the website of the school, Walton Rural School Life Academy in Walton, Kansas. Hopefully, you've seen that. This is who we are using as our mentoring's idea, ideal way to keep kids with their evolution to become whatever they want to be in life. Definitely no financial gain. If you honestly did look at the site, then you could imagine a school where kids want to go to school, even if they're ill, having a three-year waiting list for enrollment in the school. For 25 years, since my oldest daughter Rebecca, who is ill and can't be with me tonight, has been in the school, I have involved in helping schools in the public testimony, as a public testimony I mentioned, and you are now aware of. I have seen programs come and go. I've been part of dispersing grants to school programs. I have devoted much, devoted much to many schools, not just for gardening, but for beautification as well. And I'm involved with partnerships in education, reading career days, and even dressed like Santa and bring smiles to kids at Christmas time. I have found with each change of a school's administration that comes along, with each change of a teacher or interested staff member, and even with each change of a school board member, comes other ideas, and that what I have invested in has gone by the wayside for the future kids coming in to their learning experiences in life. I have heard that I should bring my ideas to existing schools and get involved with existing programs, which would just fit what I provide. I've been there so often, what I do now, very few hopes that what I invested in will continue. I've also heard that there are too many charter schools in the neighborhood. I've found that there are many who are against these type of schools for one reason or the other, and some even look as a new school coming in competition. Yet, we hope to share the school's ideas with others as a model for them to copy and build on as well. Yes, it took a team to bridge the riddles to put this petition together with no startup money but our own, and only some paid help, which we were told we could not do without, and we could afford to pay them. Each did a part to gather this petition as a whole. So we now, we are not experts in all the parts, just in the ones that we worked on to do the best that we could to provide in the given guidelines that were provided us in the beginning. It was quite a document, not without flaws, not without typos, but with a very unique in its own way because of the special concepts taken to form the ideas of the school. Yes, we even checked with the city's, the code and the ability of having animals at the school, and this was one of my jobs.
Thank you very much. That concludes your 10 minutes.
Was it 10 minutes?
10 minutes per side.
I would like to talk for the community's behalf. I'm the executive director of a group called Begins With Family. I represent over 100 companies, 150 companies that are family-owned and run throughout San Diego. Some of them you know, as far as Kohl's Carpet, some of them you know as companies like Pet Kingdom. I wanted to stand here today as a part of a group that has come together, that is built, City Farms Nursery is part of our group. We're built together to build something different that nobody else does. We are a group of people that collaborate and work together to build things. We want to be here to support him because we are planning to help with the financial issues, help him with the educational issues and other things that you noted today. Maybe you didn't get enough petition signatures.
Thank you for your final.
We will make sure that those things will be taken care of if you'll take this consideration in.
Thank you for your final comments, because we need to be consistent when other items are brought forth. So that's going to conclude the 10 minutes for, in support of City Farming. Did you have something to say other than words of support?
Yes, please.
Did you have supportive comments to make?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we've concluded that part, and it pains me to say that, but we have to be consistent because we have probably six other actions to take, and they're all going to be given 10 minutes as, as.
President, I would like to object as a citizen of the city of San Diego. I feel like I should have the right to be able to speak my piece.
Sir, we need to be consistent, but this is what I would offer to you. At the end of every board meeting, we have non-agenda public comments. So if you want to stick around and make a comment on non-agenda public comment, you have the right to do so, but we have to be consistent. So, board members, did you have any questions or comments on this action item? Right, right, because we're going to make, there's going to be a motion made in a second, and then we're going to vote. But prior to voting, were there any further comments or questions? Oh, there are none. I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
I'll move the staff recommendation.
No second.
All right. If there are, are there any, yes, thank you.
Yeah, I can recall the presentation last week. We heard a tremendous idea. It was very attractive, it was very exciting, it was talking about urban farming in our schools, and I thought it was excellent. I had experience with gardens, had experience working with gardens in schools, and saw the idea as absolutely incredible. At the time, I think a number of said the plan was terrific, let's take a look at it. We're looking forward to staff's review of the findings and their recommendation. So we got that this week, and staff found significant flaws and serious omissions, and due to that, they're making, the recommendation is not approving. And I see that as not an act against charters, it's not a recommendation against farming, it's not a recommendation against the quality and the type of program, and I hope that we can go forward with the idea. But we have a fiduciary responsibility to have charters that are quality, charters that meet a high standard, charters that have the potential to succeed, and it's a staff's expert opinion that this one isn't there. And as sad to say, I love the idea, but can't, and can't support this particular charter at this particular time, and I will move with, I will vote for the staff's recommendation for those reasons.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a couple of comments to the people here this evening that have worked so hard for, you know, City Farming Academy Charter School. The idea of getting children involved in farming animals and the value that that has is immeasurable. I'll never forget a couple of years ago when Dr. McQuarrie, before he was on this board, and superintendent Cindy Martin and myself, we helped to put in a massive expansion of the school, of the student garden at Pacific Beach Middle School. And the number of children involved in gardening at that school have dramatically increased. They put the fruits of their labor on their salad bar, they celebrated, and the students learn about the water cycles, the growing cycles. They learn so much, because when they do, they learn. And the idea, I think, is phenomenal. When we take a look at the charter petition specifically and look at the California Code, the fiduciary responsibilities of this board, and the prima facie case factors that must be met, unfortunately, after staff's thorough review, there are several factual findings. Now, one or two of them may be in contention, but there are several others that I see that are a barrier at this point in time to going forward with the charter school. However, there was comment about four acres on Euclid with a nonprofit and taking the idea of using that as a science lab. And with other organizations, this board and this school district have had other unique partnerships where we create these kinds of learning opportunities, and then we bring all the children of all the schools to that learning opportunity. So that's maybe something that I would like to explore, Bill, and with several other folks in your organization, about what other ways can we try to meet those needs for the children in a variety of different schools? And that's just one idea. I'm sure there's a lot of other ideas to allow access to this kind of outdoor educational farm learning for children in schools in San Diego. But at this point in time, it just seems that there are so many challenges with the legal and fiduciary responsibilities that I can't vote to support the charter at this time. Thank you.
Okay, if there are no other comments, I just want to say that your comments, trustee McQuarrie, really capture how important the work is from City Farming and also the findings that make it challenging for board members to, or for me as a trustee, to vote for it. But I am looking forward to our partnership expanding so that more students have access and benefit from the education. So I'm looking forward to that and seeing how we can work collaboratively to make that happen. All right. Has everyone voted? For the motion, yes. Has everyone voted? Yes. Okay. Okay. That staff recommendation passes unanimously, and we're going to move on to F4, City Heights Preparatory Charter School Superintendent, oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Park?
I'll move item F4.
Mr. President, can I have the board's part of this place? It's starting in the lab.
Okay. So what we've done this evening is we have had different schools come in according to when their board item comes up. So if you are part of Board Action Item F3 and are not staying for the rest of the meeting, it would be greatly appreciated if we can move the other, the other schools in. So can you call them?
As soon as we're done with this, bring the next one.
Okay. So we are finished. So we need to find a way to.
They're all here.
Oh, you're here? Oh, okay. All right, perfect. Okay, is it, okay, perfect. Okay, so here we go.
All right. Madam President, I'd like to move item F4, staff recommendation to renew the charter of City Heights Prepory Academy.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. F4 is an action item. Staff is recommending to grant the renewal of the charter and special education agreement for City Heights Prep for a five-year term beginning July 1st, 2016, ending June 30th, 2021. The board, of course, has multiple options available to it. Staff is recommending a full renewal for the full five-year term. City Heights Prep was originally authorized to serve grades 6 through 12, beginning with just grade 6 and adding a grade level each year, and it is in the process of doing that. The overview gives you a brief chronology about some of the school's opening developments. With regard to the educational program, we just want to point out very, in a summative manner, that some of the components that characterize the school include a modified block schedule, extended school day, before-school tutoring, and small counseling groups. The school is located at 3770 Altadena Avenue in the Crawford Cluster. You have extensive tables summarizing academic data, in part because City Heights Prep's establishment came at a time when the start, the assessment system was in transition. In the event, our board deems that the school is not ready to be renewed. We have identified several findings that would support a board action to deny the charter for renewal. I'm happy to go over those in detail, however, the staff recommendation is to renew it.
And I believe we have speakers on this item, and we have Mr. Hamandi, Julio Sanchez, Daniel Thompson, Jory Tulkey, Marnie Nair. And I don't have any, well, I don't have any white sheets for them, or they're not any white sheets. No, okay. Perfect. All right. Right, yes, when I finish reading all of them, I will. Okay. So we have Hindali, Monsay Busto, Gabe Collins, Graciela Lococo, Billy Moore, Jane Wong, Tim Wolfe. Okay, and so, are there more?
I think these are for the next.
Okay. All right. So you have a 10 minutes total, 10 minutes total? 10 minutes total? Okay, for this, I'm just saying. All right. So you manage your time in 10 minutes. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent Martin, President Foster, and members of the board. My name is Jory Tulkey. It is my privilege to stand here tonight as a board member for City Heights Prep for the past two and a half years. I first became involved with City Heights Prep back in 2009, when Dr. Nair shared her vision for a school that was, at that point, still in the idea stage. Having become familiar with the community of City Heights through my participation in Lead San Diego's partnership with City Heights Farmers Market, I was immediately drawn to the vision of a 6th through 12th grade college preparatory charter school in City Heights that would facilitate student success by providing support as they make the crucial transitions between middle and high school and high school and college. As a mother, I was immediately drawn to the school's emphasis on being a small, neighborhood-based school where each student is known. It has been such a joy watching the school grow and thrive over the past four years. The school is such a rich addition to the City Heights community in many ways, but what stands out most to me is the familial environment it provides. At last year's eighth-grade promotion ceremony, what struck me the most was how over and over, the students themselves said that City Heights Prep isn't just a school, but it's a family. And I believe that you all have been able to witness this as well at our public hearing, when so many of our parents and students have been to show you how important that it is to them that City Heights Prep remain open so that their children can continue to excel both academically and socially. The City Heights Prep Board appreciates the strong working relationship that we have built over the years with the SDUSD Charter Office and look forward to continuing this in the years to come as we work to ensure that City Heights Prep remains a strong middle and high school in good standing with the district. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Good evening, President Foster, members of the board, Superintendent Martin, and Charter Office staff. My name is Marnie Nair, and I'm honored to serve our families and students as the founding director of City Heights Prep Charter School. I want to begin by thanking the Charter Office staff. Throughout the past four years, they have consistently given us clear feedback that has helped us strengthen our school and its programs. And in the weeks leading up to this hearing, they have not only taken the time to thoughtfully review our petition, but also to ask clarifying questions. We are very pleased that their oversight and review has led them to recommend renewal for our school. We are also very honored that two San Diego Unified School Board members were able to visit our school and speak to our students about their own school and college experiences. Each day, I'm struck by just how amazing our students are. They're eager learners and growing more so each year, and each is finding his or her voice in the special something that they have to offer the world and to all of us. As you toured our school and interacted with our students, I hope you're also able to experience this. It is the outcome of why we all, you guys and me too, do what we do each day, and it's very humbling and exciting to watch. Many of our students are new to America. For example, in 2014, 48% of our entering sixth-grade class were beginning English speakers based on cell data, and most are refugees from places around the world where people sought to stifle or even silence their voices. Helping our students have the confident voice of a leader is central to all we do at City Heights Prep, and the charter process has been a great way for our students to experience firsthand that their voice matters, not just at City Heights Prep, but also in our city. The fact that over 200 students and family members were here at our public hearing last month is evidence that this message is taking root in their lives, and I'm so proud of them for letting you all know that the continuation and success of our school is very important to them. When we last appeared before you, the decision was made to extend our charter to allow us to provide you with stronger data showing student growth two years ago. This decision proved very fortuitous as it allows us to showcase tonight just how much our students are achieving academically. Based on the standardized and highly-regarded MAP testing, our students made an average of 2.17 years of growth across the subjects of ELA, math, reading, and science last year. This pattern of growth held true across subgroups, with all subgroups achieving between 1.5 and 2.8 years of growth across all subject areas for all subgroups. Furthermore, the longer students have been enrolled at City Heights Prep, the higher their achievement and the greater their gains. To be sure, just as we encourage our students to be lifelong learners, we remain committed to growth and improvement at City Heights Prep, and we look forward to continuing to work with San Diego Unified Charter Office to ensure this is the case. But tonight, we're taking a moment to celebrate three, going on four years of success. It seems like yesterday that City Heights Prep began with a single sixth-grade class and a big dream. Tonight, we stand as a fully-enrolled 6th through 9th grade school, looking forward to sending our very first high school graduates off to college in 2019. Thank you very much for your work on behalf of San Diego students, and thank you for your oversight of City Heights Prep. Please listen to our voice as we all, students, parents, staff, and board, ask you to grant our petition to renew our charter.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of my school. My name is Daniel Thompson, and I have been an English teacher at City Heights Prep for the last two years. I'm a New Yorker, straight from the heart of the Big Apple, and I'm going to tell you why I moved my family 3,000 miles to work at City Heights Prep. In New York, I taught L students for several years. I loved teaching, but struggled as the, my students' voices were stifled and limited. And then, I heard of a small school in San Diego that was providing newly-arrived refugee students with a cutting-edge, research-based education. This was a school where powerful voices were shaped. So many of our students arrive at City Heights Prep vulnerable and voiceless. This means that our job, our first job, is to help them find that voice. Through peer collaboration, authentic problem-solving experiences, immersion in academic vocabulary, and practice, practice, practice of essential foundational academic skills, we begin to hear a voice, ready to engage with a rigorous college preparation curriculum. We are seeing the results of this as our first group of sixth graders has now entered high school and are experiencing success in A-through-G coursework. I can't wait to work with them as they move through high school, help them apply to the colleges that they are researching even now, and watch them succeed in the university of their choice. So again, why am I so far from home? We get exactly what we all need here: strong voices, steady, well-spoken, educated voices, voices dedicated to not only improving our community, but changing the world. Turn on the news, scroll through your Facebook feed, too many are shouting, still more remain silent. These voices, these voices are much needed. Please do not silence them. Instead, help us continue our work so that we can all learn from what they have to teach us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. My name is Amadi, and I'm from Somalia. I came to the United States February 25th in 2004 with me, my wife, and me, my wife, and my older son Salah. So I'm five of six now, and which is including Salah and Halima who's attending the City Heights Prep. So before City Heights Prep, Halima and Salah.
My name is Julio Sanchez. I'm sure some of you remember me from the first time City Heights Prep came to renew our school. I spoke to you once, and I showed you how much I care about this place, and I'm ready to do it again. By far, City Heights Prep has started getting, has started getting me somewhere. In the beginning, in the beginning when I was in sixth grade, I was the kind of kid that didn't care to do his work. I slowly began failing my classes. And before I got any more abs, one of the strictest teachers at City Heights Prep called for a parent conference. After that conference, the rest of the teachers started pushing me to do more of my work. Through the years of sixth grade to now ninth grade, I've gone to know teachers who have a similar background as mine. My teachers have shared their stories of succeeding with me. Now I am learning what I can do to make my way to college. A lot of us think about college and say we want to go to some of the best, like UCSD, UCLA, Stanford, Harvard, Berkeley, and many more. We look at our principal, Dr. Nair, who went to Harvard, Berkeley, and I believe Columbia, and we think, wow, if she made it to those three, where can I make it? Maybe beyond, or exact, or at that exact point. We truly believe that being here for high school is the best way we can make it, we can make it to attending these colleges. City Heights Prep will help us make, will help us make it to college. I love this school, and so does my mom. She sees me progressing and is expecting a lot from me. My family knows that I can get the best education here. If we shut down, I wouldn't know where to go. I wouldn't know what school to find that will help me, will give me the same help as I can get here. Let us stay open. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll give you some extra time.
Yeah, who's attending in City Heights Prep? Before they attended City Heights Prep, I had to, we had to experience a lot of pain, me and my wife. And every day, the school called us a parent conference, we used to, we used to experience a lot of pain during the elementary school, until I heard one of us, one of the students, now his name Hussein, he's a senior student at City Heights Prep, telling my wife and how, how good City Heights Prep is and how much he likes it. So as soon as the Salah finished the fifth grade, I immediately take it to the City Heights Prep. The promise was made, added to me from the principal, telling me that Salah will do better as long as he's here. So within three months, because of the teacher quality they have, the communication, and the school rules, they was able to turn around Salah very quickly in a few months, and with Halima still struggling on an elementary school. As soon as Halima finished the fifth grade, I took her to City Heights Prep, which is now, is right now. So my request to the Board of Education is to keep the City Heights Prep open so we don't suffer anymore. Our kids don't suffer anymore because we don't speak English, my wife, she doesn't speak English. We came from foreign country, and our kids have been struggling. I witnessed my daughter, Halima, struggling every night until 11 o'clock, trying to figure out, to figure out homework, she couldn't get it done. But now, they become from struggling kids to professional kids. They don't only help themselves, they only help my other kids doing their homework. So my request to you, the Board of Education, is to keep open City Heights Prep. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So we have a motion in a second. I don't know if any board members wanted to make some comments before we vote.
I wanted to thank City Heights for the nice welcome I had and the visit I had, the tour that the students gave me, a very professional, competent staff, and then the opportunity to tell my story during a school assembly. And it was a thrill to be there, to see this little engine that could, a school that's providing so much help and support to so many families that are coming from so many places in the world with huge challenges and struggles. And it just thrills me to know that we have a heart in this district that can reach out and provide this kind of services for these families. And so I'm very proud to cast a yes vote to see this charter continue so that your story can grow, so that your message can be heard, and so that we can, we can give a safe place for families and children to grow.
Thank you. And I would like to thank Gabby and Marnie for, yeah, I did say Marnie, huh? It's Marnie, who's one of the directors, for inviting me to speak to your students. And I was extremely impressed, very, very impressed. And I'd come back again in a minute, so keep me in mind. Thank you. Board members, can we please vote? And that passes unanimously.
President Foster, I'll move staff recommendation on item F5. Second.
And we can take, I think it's safe to say we can take a one and a half or two-minute break while there's some movement.
Can we jump into it? Jump.
All the time, the family, keep driving. Keep driving. Keep driving.
Here's the speakers for fight for the next item.
This break helps us.
I thought that you guys were going to go up and then, then.
Well, actually, I, I mean, it's, 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 we're going to present, and then we're going to have speakers come up.
So, um, we are going to continue with, um, F5, King Chavez Academy of Excellence and King Chavez Preparatory Academy, and Ms. Park and Ms. Walsh.
Thank you. F5 is another action item for two charter schools, King Chavez Academy of Excellence and King Chavez Preparatory Academy, which I'll refer to as Excellence and Prep. Staff is recommending renewal for the full five-year term along with the special education agreements for each of the charter schools, July 1st, 2016, for a term ending June 30th, 2021. Um, a overview is presented to you here in the agenda language. Excellence and Prep are two of the six charter schools operated by the nonprofit corporation, uh, King Chavez Academy of Excellence. You can see in table one the other charter schools and the grade levels. Excellence is located at 2850 Logan Avenue, Prep is located at 530th Street, and both schools are located within the San Diego High Cluster. Some of the educational program characteristics that we'd like to point out, while there are many, um, as a whole, the King Chavez schools emphasize a power hour, which focuses on group literacy skills, a mindfulness where yoga and meditation techniques are demonstrated and utilized by students, and restorative justice practices, a make it right effort. We also want to just point out with respect to renewal, part of what staff considers is the past performance of the school's academics, finances, and operations, and we also evaluate the likelihood of future success. Um, as with all of our charter schools, these schools have undergone annual site visits. Academic data summarized for you extensively in the multiple tables for each of the charter Some of the operational components that we like to point out for you, um, under table 16 are the parent involvement opportunities that are described in the bullet points. And I understand there are several speakers here to address you, and I'm happy to go into detail of any of the tables academically or financial.
Okay. Thank you very, very much. And so for, um, item F5, we have Maggie Ramirez Barnett, um, Hidali Lomili, um, Monze Busto, um, Gabe Collins, Graciela Lococo, Billy Moore, Jean Wong, Tim Wolf, and Estela Osorio. Um, you can make sure that I have everyone?
Yeah.
Okay. And then we also have, um, Ms. Martinez, Scott Worthing, Ramon Chunky Sanchez we have with us today. Um, and so you, I have to reiterate, uh, so that I'm consistent, probably like three times, that in total, you have 10 minutes. In total, you have 10 minutes. In total, you have 10 minutes. Um, and so it's up to you to manage your time wisely, but when the buzzer goes off in the interest of everyone that we have to hear tonight, it's 10 minutes. All right. Thank you so very much.
Good evening, Madam Superintendent, board members, um, and staff, and a special thanks to the charter staff for, uh, all of their assistance in this arduous task of putting together a renewal. I'm not going to bore you with a lot of words from me tonight. Uh, you've heard me many times before, but I do have, uh, some exciting comments from some of our students, teachers, uh, community members and staff, uh, that I think you would be interested in hearing. Um, in lieu of your valuable time, we've, uh, asked them to keep these comments short. Uh, we will be available, myself and my staff, to answer questions after we're finished here, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, board members, Superintendent Martin, charter staff. Uh, thank you for having us tonight. I'm Scott Worthing. I'm the principal at King Chavez Preparatory Academy. Uh, for the last 10 years, I've been with King Chavez, uh, last seven as principal of arts and athletics, and this is my first year at Prep. Um, I'm very excited about the progress we've made, uh, at Prep, and like to recognize the hard work of the people. Uh, a lot of them are here with us here, students and staff staying late, uh, so I'd like to acknowledge their hard work, uh, of what we're doing day by day. Um, I'd like to thank them for their patience, love, and the, the ability to serve our community. Currently, we are proud to offer our students a rigorous academic program, in-school interventions along with a variety of electives and after-school clubs. We pride ourselves on educating the whole child and believe deeply in never giving up on kids. Uh, restorative practices, home visits, and mindfulness are a few of the vehicles that we use to deliver on this promise. Uh, we look forward to the next five years, and we thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Gabe Collins. I have the privilege of being the principal at King Chavez Academy of Excellence. At King Chavez, we strive to empower all our students. In recent years, we have searched for opportunities to help expose our students to meaningful learning experiences, as well as give them the opportunity to take ownership of their learning. Last year, we shifted our approach from the more traditional to a project-based approach. To our knowledge, this is something that no other neighborhood school in Barrio Logan has attempted with their students. Although we definitely are not where we would like to be, in the short time that we have implemented this approach, we have been amazed by the results. Students are more engaged because they are working on more purposeful tasks. We have incorporated elements such as critique to give our students a voice in the learning process. We have engaged the community by inviting outside experts in our classrooms, or organized field trips that allow students to ask questions of professionals working in different fields. Similarly, we have used this as a platform to engage parents. Our showcase events, which have been held a couple different times throughout the year, allow parents to share in their students' learning. Last year, the three showcase events that we held were the most attended events of any that we held at our school with over 70% parent attendance. Like other schools, we hold conferences. Unlike the traditional approach where the adults dominate the conversation, at King Chavez, we include the most important variable in the equation: the student. Students drive the discussion by presenting what they feel they're doing well, what they can improve upon, and how the other stakeholders in their education can help them to progress. These are just two examples of a myriad of ways that we are not conducting business as usual at King Chavez, and this is part of the reason why the Logan community has entrusted us with their students for over 15 years. We are confident that if granted a renewal today, we can continue to build on these initiatives and seek other opportunities to help equip our students with the skills to be lifelong learners who can have a positive impact on the Barrio Logan community going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, board members, families, and guests. My name is Monze.
And my name is Hidali. We are in sixth grade at King Chavez Academy of Excellence.
We haven't always attended King Chavez Academy of Excellence. We both enrolled in fifth grade. My family chose to enroll me at King Chavez Academy of Excellence because they thought it was a much better choice and that if I attended King Chavez, King Chavez Academy of Excellence, my scores would go up, and they were right, they did.
We would like to share a little bit about our experience at King Chavez Academy of Excellence. I love that we, I made new friends and were able to help me with my school projects.
We are a project-based learning school. We work together with classmates to become experts on our project theme.
At my school, people are always generous. They are willing to help me. They are, uh, my new school is different from my old school because at King Chavez Academy of Excellence, I feel supported and willing to reach my goals.
I am also thankful that King Chavez Academy of Excellence is an option for students in the Logan Heights neighborhood because they provide a school that believes that you can accomplish anything.
I love my school because I feel like I'm a family member. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Martin. My name is Estela Osorio, and I'm a student at King Chavez Preparatory Academy. The approval for King Chavez Preparatory Academy is very important to me because I've been a student of the King Chavez family for over seven years. King Chavez Prep is a small school that allows teachers and staff to get to know each and every student. It's a great feeling coming to school each and every day knowing that I'm more than just a number. The teachers and staff really do care about me and provide me with the social, emotional, and academic support that I need. They help me out daily and motivate and inspire me to stay on track and to do the right thing. All of the students of King Chavez Prep have a bright future and have the potential to succeed. The teachers and staff work together with us on setting goals, and they provide us the necessary support to achieve our goals. King Chavez really helps us to grow as well-rounded individuals. Please renew our school. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Maggie Ramirez. I'm one of the many, many proud, um, parent volunteers at the school, not just one, but of, uh, the academies there. My children attend too. One of them is right here, and he attends Excellence. Uh, the school mission statement is, "We seek excellence in academics, arts, athletics, from the foundation of love," and that's why my husband and I chose these schools. They don't attend my neighborhood school because it's conveniently there, which I thank God it is, but because they deserve a better education, a different and a more efficient way of learning things. At King Chavez Excellence, not one student is just another number in a classroom. They are all one big family, and every teacher and administrator know their names, and I love that about my school, and I do call it my school. Students have graduated from high school. They often come back to say hello for one reason, and that's because they recognize the love poured into them from their teachers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, board members, family members, and students. My name is Gracie Lococo, and I have been at King Chavez Academy of Excellence since 2004, so my heart is with King Chavez absolutely 100%. Um, and so I, I was a teacher there, and now I am a credential teacher still, but I am doing reading interventions, which is a really important part of what we do at King Chavez. Um, we work collaboratively as a team of intervention teachers who provide the individualized attention that our students need, and we do it both in math and reading. Um, we work in small groups on a daily basis to make sure that our students are getting that additional support in conjunction with what the teachers are already providing. Um, we follow the RTI model to assure that students are receiving their Tier Two and Tier Three intervention needs, um, and we are constantly reviewing our data to make sure that, you know, we're making the necessary changes that, um, and that we're meeting the, um, students' specific needs. We believe that this type of personalized attention is exactly what our students need in order to prepare them for the challenges of high school and beyond. King Chavez has always been dedicated to our students and our families. We are a family, and, um, we want to stay in the community of Logan Heights, and so I'm asking that you renew our charter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, board. My name is Elvia Martinez. My journey with KC Schools started many years ago, going to the door to sign up students for our school, which was not an easy task, but it was a labor of love, and I did this for Prep as well as for Excellence. Three of my own children have attended KC Schools, two in Excellence and one at Prep, and many nephews and nieces that have attended and are still attending KC Schools. I also have a granddaughter who currently attends KC Prep. I've seen how our school has changed this community for the better, where our students take pride in their community and in their school. I've seen our students walk through our doors as middle schoolers, and they return to us as mature, proud members of society who have moved on to higher education, and they come back to let us know how much the school helped them and what it has meant to them to get an education in their own community. At KC Prep, our students learn more than academics. They also learn about respect, caring, tolerance, hard work, dedication. I can go on and on. And so I come here before you and ask you to please deny, deny future generations of the KC Prep learning experience and to please approve our charter. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jean Wong. I'm the CEO of the League of Extraordinary Scientists and Engineers. I'm very honored to be asked to be here by King Chavez. For the last two years, uh, the League of Extraordinary Scientists and Engineers has brought scientists and engineers from all over San Diego County into King Chavez and also 35 other San Diego Unified School District schools. Uh, King Chavez, we get the unique perspective to see the passion in teachers, and the passion in these teachers is amazing. In fact, one of their teachers at King Chavez Excellence was voted unanimously, uh, by the League of Extraordinary Scientists and Engineers as the most passionate and memorable teacher, uh, at, at our last event, surely. Thank you. Uh, we believe in them so much that this last summer, we put in a discovery garden into their campus for the kids to continue doing science, hands-on science, because they do that at that school. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So, so thank you, uh, because that concludes your time, but there's, um, yes, so thank you very, very much. Did, uh, board members have, uh, questions or, or comments before we vote?
Yep. Yeah. Tressie Barrera made the motion, and I seconded it, but I did have a, a quick question, uh, for the principal of either one. Um, I'm kind of curious, what kind of turnover are you having with staff and teachers in specific, uh, in the last year?
We, we had a significant turnover, I would call it.
About 50%, would you say?
Yeah, I think that's fair. I think there's the market, we spoke to UCSD, uh, they were experiencing that as well, uh, so some aware of, some were addressing, uh...
What do you mean UCSD?
We work with, very closely with UCSD and their partnership up there, uh, with their, um, teacher credentialing program, and they were, uh, experiencing that on the teacher side of things, uh, so, uh, we've been addressing it, uh, looking at it, uh, what, what the causes are, doing some reflection, and, uh, we're addressing those needs.
Okay. Uh, because, you know, I really think that it's very, I mean, I, I, I think what you guys are doing is phenomenal work. I seconded the motion. I'm going to support the renewal. I voted for the renewal five years ago. I'm going to vote for it five years from now, probably, if, well, maybe not. Anyway, and, um, uh, but I, I think it's really, really important that you really take a serious look at, in the mirror, and try to figure out this, the retention piece, because that is a telltale sign of trouble in, in, in any organization, whether it's in the private sector, the public sector, or in the educational fields. And when you're having 50% turnover, um, then, then that, that might be, that might be, you know, something that really needs to, to be looked at.
Yeah, I can assure you that.
Because I know Poijs, uh, up at UCSD, Poijs... Because I know Proust, up at UCSD, Proust Charter School, they have almost zero turnover. And that is a phenomenal model of a charter school, in my opinion. So I just leave it at that, but I will be voting in support. Thank you.
Yeah, this is one of our oldest charters, and because of that and the history that's involved and how they've moved from where they were to where they are, I thought I could ask Chunky a question and maybe give us a minute to describe the history of this particular charter and what has transpired over these many years.
Go ahead. You have a question? You said?
Yeah, could you give us a brief overview of the history of this charter and what, in your mind, is the reason it's been so successful?
Well, it's got its years of history in the Barrio there affecting the lives of thousands of kids, and that's why I think many of you, all of you that are up on this board, know that you're making decisions that affect the lives of thousands of young students in the inner city, and that's very important because if there's anywhere it's needed, it's right there. And King Chavez is based on very simple philosophy: love, love for the kids, love for the students and staff, and also social justice, because it kind of goes in hand-in-hand with learning and learning about yourself and learning about just any subject matter that you want to learn. But as this one student told his counselor one day, he was going to get some classes for the coming year, and he said, "Do you know what, Mr. Counselor? Give me some classes that will get me to Penn State and not the state Penn." Thank you very much.
We could not have done without that at all. If there are no other questions or comments, can we please vote? And that passes unanimously.
Don't worry about that. I appreciate you. Come, pick each other up. Come.
Oh, yeah, I think it'll, yeah. Oh, yeah, it could probably take about three minutes, yeah.
Nice, nice.
I gotta get my baby in there.
We saved our school.
Right. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr., you were saying?
Yes.
You're great.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations to those two little girls.
They did such a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
President Foster, I'll move staff recommendation on F6.
Second. Thank you very much, and Ms. Park and Walsh, or the tag team?
Thank you. Item F6 is an action item on the renewal of the charter petition for Old Town Academy. The school opened in 2011 and serves grades K through eight at a non-district site in Old Town. Just to give some background on the write-up that is in your packets, on October 2nd, 2015, Old Town Academy submitted a renewal petition which reflected the school's August 2014 merger and/or sale to Tri Valley Learning Corporation, a Livermore-based charter management organization. The district relayed to Old Town Academy its concerns regarding the proposed governance, finance, and operations, and initially wrote a denial recommendation, which is included as part of this item.
Point of order. I just want to clarify that I seconded the revised staff recommendation, not the old staff recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you for that point of clarification.
That's what the motion is.
Right. Okay, thank you.
And then on November 23rd, 2015, Old Town submitted a revised petition, which no longer contemplated the merger with Tri Valley. So based on the revised petition, staff is recommending that the board grant the renewal of the Old Town Academy charter for a five-year term beginning July 1, 2016, with the following conditions. And we do note that the conditions that I'm going to go through have been shared with Old Town Academy, and they have agreed to the conditions. So condition number one, staff recommends the board grant the renewal, with the condition that on or before December 11, 2015, Old Town Academy agrees and affirms that it has terminated its merger or sales transaction with Tri Valley Learning Corporation, including rescinding all documents that were used in the transaction, and that it will not seek a merger and/or sales transaction with Tri Valley Learning Corp. or any other charter management organization during the term of the renewal. And you'll see listed are the documents that were used for that transaction, so we're specifically asking for them to clarify that those have all been rescinded. Condition number two, that on or before December 11, 2015, Old Town Academy will provide documentation to the Office of Charter Schools that demonstrates that all employees at Old Town Academy are either directly employed by Old Town Academy or fall under a lease-back employment services agreement that specifies Old Town Academy is the exclusive public school employer for all employees at the school for purposes of the Educational Employment Relations Act. And then there's some proposed language that would be revised within the charter to cover that. The concern with that item was that we understand Old Town Academy's intent in leasing back or using that process for the employees was to obtain a better benefits package for them. Our concern was that we didn't want that to come at the price of employees losing some of their rights. So we've asked for Old Town to clarify that for us. And then condition three, on or before December 11, Old Town Academy will provide documentation to the Office of Charter Schools that demonstrates the steps taken to change the agent for service of process to a local San Diego person at the school. Condition four, again, on or before December 11, that Old Town Academy will sign and return the attached special education agreement. Conditions five and six relate to language within the petition regarding special ed and the SELPA. We've requested that they remove a sentence and modify another sentence to clarify the special ed services that will be provided to students. Condition number seven is requesting that the bylaws be revised to match what the charter petition says. There's a slight conflict right now. The petition says five to eleven members. The bylaws say five to fifteen members, so we have requested and made it a condition that they will modify the bylaws to match the petition. Condition eight is to remove what is considered a typographical error by the school in Element G. It refers to the new charter school. The school has relayed to us that that was inadvertently in there, and they are not intending to open a new school within San Diego. Condition nine is some revisions to the dispute resolution language within the charter petition. And then condition number ten is on or before December 11, 2015, that the school will submit a more detailed budget to us. They have submitted a more summative budget to us, so we can see some information in there, but we are requesting more detailed information. So based on those conditions, staff is recommending that the board grant the renewal of the Old Town Academy charter petition for a five-year term beginning July 1, 2016, ending June 30, 2021, with the above conditions. We are also, a note in here, that if they do not comply with the conditions or if the board should decide to revert back and look at the October 2nd petition that there is, the findings still in the item that the board could adopt. I also wanted to note, as part of the renewal, that the school's most recent academics, the API, was 901, and they had a statewide rank of nine, similar schools rank of five, so they have met academic renewal criteria. And then another thing we note about the school, they have recently expanded their board by adding six parents to it, and they have also moved to an elected board, so we note that of the school.
And I believe we have speakers on this item who can speak in any order, but you have a total of ten minutes. And so we have Thomas Gabrielli, Christopher Celentino, Sandra Gartland, Emma Denton, Thomas Donahue, Eleo Celentino, and John Centofranchi. And you have a total of ten minutes. Hold up, hold up a minute. Okay, perfect.
Good evening. My name is Johnson O'Frenchie. I'm the principal at Old Town Academy. In my previous presentation on November 3rd, I described what makes OTA an innovative, challenging, project-based school that develops the whole child. And to be honest, that information can be learned by visiting our website, reviewing our LCAP, and reading our charter petition. What I failed to do was to share our heart. We at OTA are a family. This is evident in amazing parent involvement and their true partnership in decision-making, the collaboration and shared leadership of our staff, and our student-centered school climate. What truly makes us unique are our special stories that reinforce what a family is all about. It may be supporting a fifth grader, the parent, I'm sorry, a parent of a fifth grader who was diagnosed with CPVT, I'm sorry. It may be supporting a fifth grader who was diagnosed with CPVT and how her condition was the catalyst to OTA becoming the first heart-safe school in the state. Or how parents and staff have worked together to support a mother of a second grader and a fifth grader who is fighting for her life as she undergoes radiation treatment following surgery, which followed chemo. Or our partnership with the Aspire Center across the street, where veterans participate in our Friday assemblies and honor the flag as we honor them. Or our wraparound and support for a sixth grader with cerebral palsy, who is our top pledge earner in our annual jog-a-thon and whose parents are ingrained in the overall success of each and every student at OTA. These are just a few stories that, coupled with the unconditional love from our OTA staff, make our school a truly special learning environment. Thank you for this added opportunity to allow me to share the heart of OTA, our family.
Thank you.
My name is Sandra Gartland. I have two children at OTA. My nine-year-old Wes started in kindergarten when the school opened, and Hudson, my third grade son. Unfortunately, Hudson had a complication at birth, and we spent an entire first year fighting for his life in the NICU. They told us he'd never walk, talk, and eat on his own. When we left the hospital, the doctor told me, "His recovery is up to you now." I had no idea what he meant. We immediately embraced the developmental services community and shortly following the school district to help. We started a new preschool Head Start program where Hudson received his first IEP. Hudson has had IEP for over six years with goals that started with eating, and I can proudly say now, it looks more like writing in five-sentence paragraphs. I want to thank the district for those programs. Hudson is at his appropriate age grade, appropriate grade, and succeeding academically. IEPs work. I've seen firsthand the difference between a school that takes pride in their special ed program and a school that's just going through the motions. The Ospreys are proud. Under new leadership of Mr. C. and his IEP team, we have received the best services we've ever experienced since Hudson was two years old. In addition to regular IEP meetings, I have morning coffee with the team. They discuss his progress. They send me videos so they can show what he's working on, and I continue that focus at home. They send me, they push into the classroom and help with his reading, writing, and math groups. Most importantly, they care about him and his social acceptability. They talk sports. They make it fun. He loves his school and the extra hand that is offered to ensure his success. He is a fighter, and so are we. Now I understand what the doctor meant when he said, "It was up to me." At OTA, we have found a family and an educational institution that has helped a little boy who was never supposed to walk, talk, and eat thrive, learn, and succeed. Please don't take this away from our family. Please support the renewal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Eleo Celentino, and I am a seventh grader, student ambassador, and on the principal advisory committee at Old Town Academy. I had the honor on taking Mr. Barrera and Mr. McCoury on a tour of the school, and they were very nice, and thank you for coming out. I am here today to talk about what OTA means to me. OTA is not like any other school where you just show up with your book bags and you show up to learn. OTA is more of a family. For instance, one sixth grade, oh, one family of five, their father had passed, and it was really cool. Some students band together and started a program that bought all five of their kids lunches and dinner for a month and a half, and I thought that was a really cool thing, how the students did that. And all the teachers and the staff are great, and they all help, and they're super nice, and please renew our charter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jacob Frashel, and I'm an eighth grader at Old Town Academy. I have been there since fourth grade. I have been there the year that the school opened. Before coming to OTA, everything school-related was a challenge to me. I struggled with the way traditional schools taught, and no one there had the time to help me learn the way I learn best, and that changed when my parents enrolled me at Old Town Academy. The teachers cared about finding ways for me to succeed and go out and find their way to make sure that I am. They understand that not all kids learn the standard ways of teaching. With the school project-based learning, I am able to do okay, but I do well in some areas, and the ones I need more help with, they make sure that I get whatever help I want, whether it's my aides, Ms. Manorino and Ms. Kay helping me to understand, or my teachers giving me extra assistance. Since the school has project-based learning, I am able to be strong in science, a subject that I excel at, even though I struggle with other areas of my learning. Please give OTA the chance to give other kids who learn differently the same opportunities I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Emma Denton.
And all the teachers and the staff are great, and they all help, and they're super nice, and please renew our charter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jacob Frashel, and I'm an eighth grader at Old Town Academy. I have been there since fourth grade. I have been there the year that the school opened. Before coming to OTA, everything school-related was a challenge to me. I struggled with the way traditional schools taught, and no one there had the time to help me learn the way I learn best. And that changed when my parents enrolled me at Old Town Academy. The teachers cared about finding ways for me to succeed and go out and find their way to make sure that I am. They understand that not all kids learn the standard ways of teaching. With the school project-based learning, I am able to do okay, but I do well in some areas, and the ones I need more help with, they make sure that I get whatever help I want, whether it's my aides, Ms. Manorino and Ms. Kay helping me to understand, or my teachers giving me extra assistance. Since the school has project-based learning, I am able to be strong in science, a subject that I'm excellent at, even though I struggle with other areas of my learning. Please give OTA the chance to give other kids who learn differently the same opportunities I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Emma Denton, and I am a seventh grader and a student at Old Town Academy. I think that Old Town Academy is special because of the project tree-based curriculum that we have. The project tree-based curriculum allows students to be creative and organized. Also, OTA is a small school, and I think that it allows the students to have one-on-one time with the teachers, and you are more comfortable. Thank you for listening and what I have to say, and I hope you renew our school charter.
Thank you.
Thank you, board members. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. My name is Chris Celentino. I'm a co-founder of the school. I'm the proud father of Elio, but I like to tell folks that my wife and I went a little crazy a few years ago, and we now have 260-plus kids that we care about deeply. I'm proud of you guys. I also wanted to thank Dr. McQuarrie and Mr. Barrera for coming out to visit our school. I think it gave you a real idea of why it's so special to us and why it's special to our community. And I especially want to thank Ms. Park and Ms. Walsh for taking extra time and effort with us. We understand that the recommendation that you received today is the result of a lot of hard work and a lot of give-and-take, and quite frankly, a lot of understanding of issues that a community doesn't necessarily understand until you have that dialogue. So, I think you all should be very proud of your staff. They did a good job working with us. They took extra time with us, and we greatly appreciate that. And quite frankly, this community is deserving of that, and these kids are deserving of that. And the principal that we have has created an open and honest environment where our kids are not just excelling academically, but they're learning to become great young adults, and they understand that character matters at OTA. And you can see that every day. I know those of you who've been there have had an opportunity to see that as you walk through the halls, not a single child is left out. Whether they have special needs or otherwise, they are not left out. And I was especially proud when I learned that it was the kids who came up with the program to help feed the children of a family that had just lost their father. And it was the easiest thing in the world for us adults to support that, because that's what kids should do for other kids. So, I thank you for the opportunity to have our charter renewed, to make it formally and official. We did agree to the conditions as set forth, and as in our discussion with Ms. Park this morning, we will do everything we can to get all of that accomplished by December 11th, and we greatly appreciate your yes vote on the renewal of our charter. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to very much thank, first of all, of course, Elio and Emma for your great tour yesterday. You're really fantastic ambassadors to your school, and your passion for your school and your ability to describe in a lot of detail, you know, what makes your school special really came across. So, you did a terrific job, and the school community should be very proud of the ambassadors. And I also very much want to thank the leadership of the school and our staff, Susan and Deidra, for working through some difficult issues. It's the way that the relationship is supposed to work between a school district and a charter school. And I would also just add that what came across yesterday in my brief visit, I believe is what a charter school is supposed to be, what the vision of the creation of charter schools was all about, and that's a community of people coming together with a vision and a belief in educating kids, and people really investing in that vision. And it's not surprising, but great to hear about the evolution of your board, adding more parents to the board, doing it through a democratically-elected process. I really believe this is an example of when we think about what the charter school movement is about, I think it's alive and well in the Old Town Academy. So, I really appreciate the work that you're doing.
Yeah, I also want to thank the ambassadors. I was thrilled to be able to tour the school and to meet with the staff, to connect with parents and students. The classroom greeters were very informed and were very articulate about what was going on and why it was going on and how it was supportive. What I saw was a very high-quality program with lots of promise, and I was troubled with the direction that it was going, and was very, very concerned, and was really, was happy to know that those discussions could be held with staff in order to take a look at the issues that were major, and a major concern, and then to arrive at a solution that was informative, that was helpful, and that will be beneficial for everyone. And I'm real pleased tonight to be able to vote for continuation of this charter and the renewal. Thank you.
Very well said. Very well said. If there are no more questions or comments, can we please vote? And that passes unanimously.
of charter school petition and special education agreement. And Ms. Parks and Ms. Walsh?
Thank you. F7 is an action item. Staff is recommending the renewal of ADEO Charter School and the special education agreement for the full five-year term beginning July 1, 2016, ending June 30, 2012, to continue serving grades K through 12. Similar to the City Heights prep, there are findings in support of a denial. Staff has laid out three options, and I'll describe to you in detail the third option that staff is recommending. As outlined in the agenda, there are eight clarifications with respect to the staff's recommendation to approve and renew the ADEO Charter School. The first one is that the following six sites, all of which are located within the district's boundaries, including Kearney Mesa, Hazard Center, Pacific Beach, Sereno Mesa, Old Town, La Jolla, and Moreno Valley be approved as part of tonight's approval. The third clarification has to do with the governance and decision-making body. Staff understands that ADEO is an independent charter school, and so, language within the petition as submitted referring to the Altus organization to be a decision-making or veto power or sole statutory member is not part of staff's recommendation. We would limit that to the ADEO governing board. And then, 4 through 8, you can see each of them have specific page numbers, and they're laid out with respect to respectively dispute resolution, closure, oversight, geographical limitation language, and insurance and indemnification. And so, going through the three options, the first option would be to adopt the written findings and deny the renewal. The second option would be to grant the renewal completely as written without any clarifications. And then, the third option, which is the staff's recommendation, is to grant the renewal with respect to those seven sites, and additional language to direct staff to continue to collaborate with ADEO in an effort to ensure a smooth transition. And of course, we're here, and I know that there are ADEO speakers as well to address you.
We have Jim Arnone, Tim Tudor, Jeff Stimple. Am I calling the right names?
Yes.
Okay. Richard Berg-Garin, Maria Perez, Sarah Casa, Dwight Darbins. And you can speak in any order that you choose. The only thing that I would request is that you stay within the timeframe, which is a total of 10 minutes. And if I am consistent, I would say 10 minutes, 10 minutes, 10 minutes, and you're on.
Thank you very much, and good evening. I'm Jim Arnone with the law firm of Latham and Watkins, representing ADEO Charter School. I'm very happy to be here tonight to urge your renewal of ADEO's charter. ADEO has partnered with the district for nearly 15 years, educating at-risk students. ADEO has educated thousands of students from a very diverse at-risk population. ADEO students are often socio-economically disadvantaged, need special education, or older students who need a second chance to be able to complete high school. This partnership has been extremely effective. Last year, 97% of ADEO students either completed their academic plan or stayed in school. We urge the board tonight to adopt Option 2. Option 2 provides the best opportunity for ADEO and your staff to work cooperatively to address the concerns your staff raised in the staff report. About the out-of-district resource centers, we believe they comply with the law. While one judge had a different view in a non-presidential case, a superior court judge in Northern California and your old attorneys, your own attorneys in past years, agreed with our position. But we are not here to argue the law. Instead, we want to work cooperatively with your staff. That's why we included in our proposal a transition plan that will transfer or close all of the out-of-district resource centers that concern your staff. So, let's be clear. Option 2, approving what we submitted, would commit us to close or transfer every out-of-district resource center. This has to be done, though, in a reasonable time period. It has to recognize that we have leases, and it needs to make sure that the students don't have their educations unduly disrupted. As for staff's concerns about corporate governance, we've just learned of those, and we're looking into them now. Under Option 2, this district retains all of its oversight authority to make sure those concerns are addressed. We don't yet know which of those concerns might or might not be necessary to comply with legal obligations, but of course, now that they've been raised, we'll look into them and we'll do whatever needs to be done. We are committed to working with your staff to work them through, and you don't need Option 3 to make sure your staff's concerns are addressed. So, we ask you to adopt Option 2, and with that, I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, President Foster, Superintendent Martin, members of the board, Tim Tudor, Director of Instruction and Innovation for ADEO. Over the past charter term, ADEO has accomplished some very significant successes as an ASAM school. Just to remind you, an ASAM school is a designation given to a school by the California Department of Education for serving high-risk students. Most students come to us behind in credits and not on track to graduate. Based upon NWA's MAPS testing, they are two grade levels behind in English and three grade levels behind on math on average. 73 represent a minority group percent, 67% are economically disadvantaged, and 14% are special education. But the real fact is, these are phenomenal students who have just not found the right place to reach their full potential, that is, until they enrolled at ADEO. The success of this school speaks for itself. During this charter term, we have accomplished the following. ADEO earned a six-year clear term of accreditation from the Western Association Schools and Colleges. That is the highest possible term a school can earn from their accrediting agency based upon the quality of the school. ADEO became one of the most successful ASAM schools in the state, yet had the 16th highest API score out of the approximately 850 ASAM schools in 2013. The University of California has approved a very comprehensive list of ADEO courses. The National Collegiate Athletic Association has approved a very comprehensive list of ADEO courses. Our enrollment has more than doubled. Parents and students want this school. ADEO was awarded a $250,000 public school charter school dissemination grant from the CDE to disseminate best practices relating to student engagement to other schools. ADEO was given the CalPads Data Management Recognition Award for the quality of data management. ADEO's innovative technology plan and work experience education plans were approved by the CDE. ADEO was granted 100% state funding by the State Board of Education for exceeding the criteria prescribed in Senate Bill 740. But the real success has come from that of our students. In the past five years, ADEO, over 800 ADEO students have graduated, the majority of them not on track when they came to us. And they have gone on to some of the nation's best universities, almost every UC and CSU school out there. From 2010 to 2014, ADEO decreased its overall dropout rate to 2.6%. This includes very low dropout rates for subgroups such as Hispanics, 2.6%, African-Americans, 1.4%, and white, 2.8%. From a school, for a school where most are not on track to graduate with low skills when they come to us and low confidence, this is phenomenal success. Over the past four years, ADEO has successfully redirected 683 students back to San Diego Unified School District Traditional Schools, a true testament to the commitment ADEO has on collaborating with the district for the benefit of each and every student. ADEO's suspension and expulsion rates have remained at nearly 0% each and every year, and for the last three years, ADEO's students are indicating a dramatic increase in self-confidence after just 90 days enrollment on their Navient surveys. As you can see, we have a strong contingency of supporters here. Behind me are students, parents, and teachers whose lives have been changed by ADEO. More than 1,100 parents, students, and teachers have signed a petition on change.org to urge you to renew this charter, because they all agree that a public school option that gives San Diego students, most disadvantaged students, the opportunity to reengage with their studies, teachers, and the school environment is important to them. And with your support, we can continue creating a better San Diego. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Jeff Stimple. I'm a former charter school of San Diego alumni. I am a former Charter School of San Diego alumni and current ADEO education specialist. I first learned about ADEO as a struggling student, so I know what it's like not to fit in the mold of a traditional school setting. ADEO gives its students flexibility and accountability, which is what I needed to graduate high school and ultimately college. Ten years later, I now work with ADEO as a special education case manager. About 14% of our students are special ed. Every day, I see the impact that ADEO has on them. We're able to implement their individualized education plans more effectively through personalized learning, our support services, and our online instruction. For example, last year, I had a student who was autistic. He struggled socially as well as academically. During his time at ADEO, he overcame a lot of diversity and even took on volunteer work. After a year, he was able to catch up and eventually earn his diploma, and he graduated on time. I know firsthand the great things ADEO does for its students, and I urge you to renew ADEO Charter School's charter so that families can continue to have the option to send their students to a school that has changed thousands of lives. Thank you.
My name is Maria Perez, and I am a student at ADEO Charter School. In August of 2012, I started high school. I have social anxiety and felt uneasy on my first day of school. When I tried conversing with other students, they turned a cold shoulder, and I found myself being even more self-conscious and anxious. Students would either ignore me or tease me. I was being bullied, and there were only two options I could choose from: suffer through it or quit and go to another school. The mental pain I would have had to endure would be too much, so I left that school and enrolled at ADEO Charter School. My transition to ADEO was made difficult in ninth grade when I received the news that my father had been diagnosed with stage IV cancer. At the time my father was receiving chemotherapy, I wasn't at home with him trying to balance school and the impending thought that he was eventually going to pass away. ADEO gave me the ability to support my father through his illness by allowing me to have a flexible schedule, focusing on one class at a time with individualized attention from my teacher. In the six months my father fought cancer, I was filled with never-ending worry. ADEO's teachers were by my side the entire time, to listen to me, answer my questions, and make sure I stayed caught up in schoolwork while fulfilling the needs of my family. My father passed away on February 17, 2014. His death made me think of all the moments in my life, sorry, that he would miss. I feel so thankful for I was in a school environment where I could excel, free from the bullying I experienced before and alongside teachers who have seen me through the hardest moments in my life. ADEO is a wonderful, alternative educational setting that has served me and thousands of other students. I am now completing my applications to several local universities, including USD, UCSD, and San Diego State.
Hi, my name is Richard.
Let me just say this. It was really a very wise move to have the students go last, because I'm not going to cut off a student from speaking.
Hi, my name is Richard. I attend ADEO Charter School's Mission Valley Resource Center. I have been on ADEO for more than three years, and I have only but great things to say about the program. I'm here today to support the renewal of ADEO's charter. ADEO's objective is to help students succeed in their life. The one-on-one teacher-to-student environment really helps students understand challenging and rigorous material. In my experience, teachers take the time to guide me step-by-step and help me find my own way of solving problems. In every assignment, they help me see things in a way that I can understand more clearly. The flexible schedules have allowed me to learn and practice new skills at home that I can use in my everyday life. I have been able to learn Persian, attend a college program at SDSU during the summer, and spend more time with my family. In addition, the ability to work on my own pace has been great. I have been able to advance and excel in the subjects I am confident with and take time to really master the subjects that are more challenging for me. In my three years at ADEO, I have been able to work ahead, completing four and a half years of school. I am 14 years old and halfway through 10th grade. In conclusion, ADEO is great for students who, one, want to excel and advance academically; two, students who need a more personal way of learning; and three, want to have a successful future. As a student, I think we should support the renewal of ADEO Charter School because education is a key ingredient to a promising and rewarding career, and it's the most powerful tool we can use to change the world. Thank you.
If you can take 60 seconds, that would be greatly appreciated.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Sarari Casas. I'd like to, first of all, thank everyone for coming here and taking time out of the day for hearing our speeches. I'm an ADEO student. Before ADEO, I went to a public high school, and I was falling behind. My grades weren't as planned or passing. I became very stressed, and I didn't find any more motivation in going to school anymore. I was behind half of a semester, and when I enrolled in ADEO, I quickly caught up. I am doing my work now, and I'm on track to graduating earlier because of ADEO. ADEO is, I love ADEO, you know. ADEO has more communication between the students and teachers, which is great. They keep you, they check on you all the time, which motivates me to do my work because it shows me that they really do care. In class, we don't only do just classwork and just lessons, but we also do workshops where we, the students get to see other students' perspectives on a subject, which allows us to open our minds and see things differently. Also, I learn better this way because I'm a visual learner. They have sometimes activities where we can do hands-on or any posters or anything. I also love ADEO because there are a lot, not as many distractions as a traditional school. I'm more focused and I'm not stressed anymore. And because of ADEO, like I said, I'm going to graduate early, and I am looking forward to a future of being a psychologist at San Francisco State.
Excellent. Okay. It's always wonderful to hear from the students, because that's the best evidence, right? Yes. So at this time, we've heard from the speakers, and board members, do you have any questions and comments? Have we done the motion in a second?
Not yet, because there are a couple of different options. I just have a quick question. First of all, you know, I heard from some folks talk about Option Two, and then staff is talking about Option Three. And one of the things that I don't see in my documentation is, it just says here, Option Two is to grant the renewal of the charter estimated, including all of the 17 in-district and the out-of-district sites. But I believe counsel from the charter, or the first speaker we heard from, said that in that proposal was also an agreement by the Charter School to close those out-of-district sites after the, some of the leases have run the course and things like that. So I would like some more clarification, either from staff or from ADEO on that point, because that's a pretty important point if ADEO is saying that Option Two does result in you closing all those sites outside of San Diego Unified District boundaries, because I think that's kind of one of the issues that we're talking about with Option Two.
I'd be happy to respond to that. Thank you for the question. So there are 17 sites identified in the petition as submitted, and should our board move to approve Option Two, they would all be approved. The option that staff is recommending, Option Three, pairs that down for a variety of reasons.
Right, but that's, my question was that ADEO, the first speaker said that their proposal in Option Two was to phase out a period that would eventually result in ADEO closing all those out-of-district learning centers. Is that correct or not correct?
I believe that's partially correct.
Okay.
I see that general counsel, did you want to step in before I did? Okay. So some of the sites identified in the petition have been identified by ADEO to transition. And so closure is, has been identified as one of the ways that the school would come into compliance by the school. Closure is not one of the options that has been encouraged by staff. So for example...
Right. Well, I believe the, I apologize to cut you off there, but you know, I believe the first speaker, and I may have misspoke, I believe the first speaker said that it would, that in Option Two, their proposal was that they would transition or close all of those ADEO learning centers outside of San Diego Unified Boundaries.
Trustee Beiser, if I could address that.
With Option Two.
The transition plan that was contained in the charter renewal petition contemplates a transition out of out-of-district sites over a lengthy multi-year period. At least one of the sites would continue to be operated under the proposed plan for another year beyond the expiration of the current lease. What I see missing from this plan is any guarantee that we are no longer exposed to litigation from those districts in which these facilities are located. The recommendation by staff is premised on the fact that we believe that only with buy-in from the host districts do we protect ourselves from that litigation, and it contemplates that we will move forward with working with the ADEO staff and with staff at adjacent and neighboring districts in order to preserve the districts, to protect the district's interests and ensure us with transition. It's my opinion that to move forward with Option Two at this time would expose the district to unnecessary risk of litigation.
Okay. Could I get further clarification, sir, on your remarks? Because you're, I believe, the individual that had said something to that effect.
Yes, indeed, and thank you.
With the Option Two recommendation that you made.
And to be clear, trustee Beiser, he is legal counsel for ADEO.
Yes, as I introduce myself, I'm Jim Arnone, Law Firm of Latham and Watkins, and I represent ADEO.
Right.
And the transition plan that we propose has for two of the schools' closure at the end of the 2016-2017 school year and for three of them at the end of the 2017-2018 school year. So I don't know that I'd characterize that as multiple years, but it's a couple of years for some. I thought they largely met the leases. I think for one, I think counsel is correct, that for one, it goes a bit beyond the lease. And the thinking is, we need to obviously meet our lease requirements, and we would need to transition out these students to other, to other educational environments. These might be transferred, these facilities might be transferred, they might be closed, but they won't be associated with ADEO. We just need a transition plan, and these have been in existence for a long time. They've been used for a long time, and so we just want a reasonable time to meet staff's concerns.
Okay. So what you're saying, then, is that Option Two, your proposal, is that there would be a transition period where the other learning centers would either be transitioned or closed over the period of a year or two?
Yes.
So that they could finish out their lease or whatever, things could be sorted out that way. And in Option Three, those would just not be renewed?
Option Three leaves me very worried. I'm not sure what it would mean after the end of the current school year, but one possibility could be that the district staff would take the position that they can't operate at all at the end of the coming school year. I hope that wouldn't be the case, but it makes us concerned.
Okay. And then if, if, if all of the learning centers outside San Diego Unified Boundaries were not, were not open next year, who would be on the hook for the lease? Would San Diego Unified have to then, would be, be on the hook for the lease? I believe it's quite a considerable amount of money. Does anybody have a comment on that?
San Diego Unified has no liability for the operations of the Charter School.
Okay, so then that would have a negative impact on the ADEO charters in our boundaries? Serious financial, okay.
So, yeah, let's talk through kind of the differences between this Option Two and Option Three. So first of all, I guess my first question maybe to the petitioner is, why aren't you petitioning in other districts? Why is the plan to close these learning centers?
In the interest of collaboration, of course, we met, and the district was kind enough to offer some suggestions. One of the suggestions was just that, apply at another district. And my staff, amazing that they are, within that short period, which has been a matter of a few weeks, maybe three or four, did indeed apply at Carlsbad. That would be a very logical solution, and if that works, that would be great. Our problem would be ended, correct? We have made an effort to do that. Now, certainly, that's going to take some time. And so we are proceeding in a way that's very collaborative. The suggestions that they gave us were, apply to another district. Okay, we'll give that a try. Another suggestion was, well, apply for a statewide charter. Well, you know, and I know, they're not granting statewide charters. They had some trouble up there, and that's not happening. The county doesn't apply charters either. One of the other suggestions was to relocate the ODIC sites, out-of-district, you know, out-of-district and county sites, within the district, which was a surprise to me, but okay, we're open to that, too. So in the charter, we named the areas where they would be. The feedback, then, was, no, that couldn't be accepted in the charter because there were no addresses noted with that. Well, it takes a good six months to locate a site, get the permitting, you know, and to figure out where you're going to build a site. So we, I believe, have tried in every way to meet the recommendation of the one meeting that we had where there was some target given to us, and we will continue to do that. So Option Two, I believe, we all believe, offers a reasonable, methodical approach to dealing with a community that in good faith we made a commitment to, because you committed to us. Two of those areas were, excuse me, those sites were mentioned in the last charter you approved five years ago. The first notice that we received was on July 10th. We received a letter from a counsel. It was a nice letter. She said she wanted to cooperate and everything, and we figured, okay, we'll do that. However, people aren't vacation in July and August. It's only until September that I could bring people together to even contemplate how this is possible. I asked first, what would the fiscal impact be? Well, after we talked about the kids and how we would need to transition them and all that. The fiscal impact of closing those sites is $1.4 million. The fiscal impact of relocating within the district is another 700 and, I forget how much, 700-plus thousand dollars. So there's a huge fiscal impact that, as Mr. Beiser points out, will impact the rest of the students that are in your district. I know this board, and I've worked with many of you for years, I know you're not about trying to destroy our program. I don't think you're trying to do that. I think you have other issues you're asking us to help you with.
Yes, sir. I appreciate that. I think it's certainly, I mean, I'll just speak for myself. I'm a supporter of the program, and I'm a supporter of the work that the program has done consistently with students. I want to figure out what the best solution is to allow the program to move forward, given the fact that the district's opinion is that a renewal of these sites that are outside of the district's boundaries subjects the district to legal liability. So what's the best solution? So I guess I'd be interested in Susan and Deidra, what do you envision happening under Option Three going forward with the sites that are outside of the, of the district?
Thank you. As Ms. Bixby pointed out, we've had many conversations, and I want to express that there have been many meetings and communications, and we've brainstormed together. Some of the brainstorming has already resulted, as Ms. Bixby has pointed out, in the ADEO board approving to submit a petition to Carlsbad. That's two of the sites. The site located in West Chester is already been transferred to Maris, one of the other charter schools operated by the Altus Organization. So when we see the number 17, I want to make sure we're paring down for you. Some of these have already been problem-solved or are working towards problem-solving. The other sites, of which there are several, Barea Logan, South Park, and several others where there's no specific address at this time, we would welcome those sites to return to our board once those permits have been obtained, once there are financial and facilities plans in place. So Option Three leaves that door wide open, and that's one of the reasons we specifically attached the charter revision form, and that's been communicated throughout this process. So we're not asking, as part of our staff recommendation, to close the door on any of these resources. We're asking that they come fully vetted, fully prepared, and with a launch date. And so if you take that out, we're going from 17 to 15 to 13 to 10, and we're trying to problem-solve each of those. That's one of the reasons the language in Option Three has been expanded to really That's one of the reasons the language in option three has been expanded to really express that. As Ms. Bixby pointed out, this conversation began in the summer, and it has been continuous. And the goal is to, again, closure is not, if that becomes one of the solutions for the 17, the goal is not to close 10 sites. I want to be very clear about that.
If I may, Mr. Barrera, I'm assuming that Susan is referring to conversations and meetings that have been among district staff. Because specifically, our discussion of options occurred on, I believe it's October 14th. We've had that documented. There are some phone calls that have come back and forth, but with very little content that gave us a direction. The decision to move one of the sites and take it off the table, we did ourselves, we thought up ourselves, and worked on ourselves. So I really, I commend all the work you have to do, especially with all these charters you are working on, I understand. But truly, at least to our standard, we have not had the kind of dialogue and the meetings that are necessary to bring forth a calm, methodical, reasonable approach to closure. Mind you, again, we don't agree that this is even legally necessary. And I hope there's some kind of clarification that happens somewhere, and we all know what we're supposed to do. But in the interest, as Mr. Arnone said, in the interest of the collaboration that we've always shared forever, since we were designed and developed and started up, we want to work with the district. I don't believe that we can do that under option three in an effective way. We've always worked with integrity and honor, and I can assure you that a vote for option two and the transition plan, which I wish had been more emphasized in the report, the transition plan that we were very responsive to, is there, and we feel that we're bound to implement that plan and to collaborate in doing the best for kids, getting them someplace. You know, the worst thing that happens is between programs, when kids drop out. We cannot allow that to happen. You don't want that to happen. Option two will do everything that you want it to be done, I can assure you. And my word is my bond. Thank you.
So I wanted to ask about what seems like the second major issue, which is the relationship between ADEO and Altus. So we just, for instance, with King Chavez, just approved renewal of two schools that are under a board structure, an umbrella structure. What's the difference in this situation?
Thank you. King Chavez has a single nonprofit, which has a five-member board, and that five-member board, including a parent representative, makes the decisions for all six schools. It's clear, they meet in district boundaries. We can call any of those five board members, including the parent representative, and they make the financial decisions for those schools. If they need to go in closed session, make a personnel decision, a real estate decision, they're required to do all the components of the Brown Act. That's the King Chavez model. The ADEO model, as brought up in the findings, we understood it to be an independent, single board of approximately three members. That's changed a little bit in the past 90 days, but a three-member board. And similar to King Chavez, they would make the decisions, financial and otherwise. What we learned as part of our renewal process, as well as our annual site visit, is that the language was proposing that a separate organization by the name of Altus, it's a private organization, which had largely overlapping members of the ADEO board, so kind of a duplicate body. It's a private organization, and so it's not a corporation that, as the district, we would have oversight over. And so the portion that's outlined for you here has to do with Altus being identified as being a sole statutory member with veto rights. So that the ADEO board would make the decisions as they would in King Chavez, but there would be this additional layer. The part that staff was struggling with was that we do not have oversight over that additional layer. As more detailed in the findings, some of the Altus portions, and we're not questioning the Altus corporation, we don't know it, we don't monitor it. Some of the transactions that concerned us, and we don't have oversight over, has to do with the use of public funds accrued on behalf of Altus schools, purchase of significant assets, including buildings, that are then transferred to Altus, and again, that loss of oversight once that transfer occurs.
Could I clarify? ADEO has never purchased any property, number one. Number two, the structure for Altus and ADEO and the other schools has been in place for years and has been reviewed for years by district staff, by those of you that have participated in our activities. We are not a new school, and some of what exists has existed for a very long time. The one part about the Altus board approving the elected board members for the schools, that's true, that's in there. I can take that to our boards. It's always been just a, it was there from years ago. I don't see that as a barrier. I don't see it as essential. I'm one member of a board, though. Of course, I have to present it to the board. And these recommendations were posted on a Friday night on a holiday weekend, and I haven't been able to get, you know, everybody together. I will surely do that. And once again, if that one part of it is an issue, it's, in my opinion, a non-issue. Doesn't it seem like a non-issue to you, easy enough?
An issue that we need to, if we're going to approve renewal of a charter, we have to have oversight over the governing body of that charter.
You do.
Well...
Well, I just want to follow up on that, just for a second, because when you're talking about this, in the report that we have, Charter School of San Diego purchased, using public school funds, $8 million for buildings. And then Charter School of San Diego, according to this, transferred the legal ownership of these $8 million worth of buildings to Altus. And then it's under Altus that we have no oversight of. And I don't know what the rules are about taking public school funds and transferring them to an entity other than the entity that it was given to.
Mr. Evans, we are not renewing the Charter School of San Diego. We're redoing, renewing ADEO Charter School. And if there are issues relating to what you're pointing up, then we will certainly address that. And whatever is appropriate in the law, we will do, as we have always done. But this is a discussion, respectfully, sir, about the ADEO charter and not the Charter School of San Diego. ADEO owns no property. It has never purchased any property. It doesn't have the money to own...
So let me ask that, why is this included in this report?
The reason it's included in the report are both of those buildings totaling $8 million at the Hoonakin site and the Benita, both of those are identified as ADEO sites within this petition. So we believe it's necessary for our board to consider the use of these buildings by ADEO. We agree, they were purchased with Charter School of San Diego funds, but they are identified within this petition to be ADEO sites.
All I can tell is it's a very complicated structure.
Extremely complex.
Charter School, ADEO, Altus, and it's hard to follow. I think the other part you talked about was the employees being employed by one and on loan to another, and it's just very difficult to follow. And I think that's what your problem has been.
Correct. It's a complex piece, and so we have been reviewing it. The pieces that you see before you were not communicated or memorialized for the first time for the renewal. We do, as you know, our annual site visit, and that includes document review, that includes in-person interviews, and that includes classroom observations. So the majority of the findings that you're seeing with respect to the on-loan, with respect to the asset transfer, the governance structure, these are discussed, these are memorialized as part of the district's site visit process as well. The complex structure with respect to ADEO is limited to the staff's recommendation for ADEO. Any point of connection to Charter School San Diego has to do with because the sites listed are for ADEO sites. One of the sites are within San Diego Unified Boundaries, and they're part of the seven that we're asking our board to approve. However, one of them are outside of the boundaries, Benita, and students are not served at that site. It's an out-of-district site that has been identified to our office as being solely administrative. So that is not part of our recommendation today.
Well, one of the things we've been working on the last few years is democratic participation of the charter school participants and transparency and so forth, and that's, it's just getting very complicated for me to follow how that works here.
Mr. Evans, you're quite right. It is very complicated, and it is very sophisticated, and it has evolved over a long period of time. It is, however, compliant and legal. Every bit of it has gone and been vetted through attorneys. We can continue that discussion with staff. Again, we're talking about the Charter School of San Diego. The students...
But she said that ADEO is listed as a location of ADEO.
Administration, administration, there's finance done. And in the Benita site, that's a training, that's a center of it for training, and those teachers participate in the training.
But she said it was in the ADEO, the ADEO petition listed one of these sites?
Both.
Both of these sites?
Yes, we fully disclose all of that. And it's, it's not illegal. I mean, it's compliant. Going back to ADEO, I don't think we probably would have even had to name ADEO in either one of those sites, if that would have reduced the complexity. But in fact, teachers go there to be trained. We can train teachers somewhere else, anywhere else. Our biggest issue, I understood, was the Odic sites. I thought that was the big concern that is weighing on the district and weighing on district staff and legal staff. And I would hope we could go back to clarify that, because that's a very important issue.
Yeah, so I wanted to ask, so staff's recommendation, option three, is to approve renewal for the identified sites that are within the district's boundaries. What's the downside? It's not to deny the renewal of the other sites. What's the downside of approving tonight, option three, and then having in some, you know, time-certain period, coming back to us for consideration of renewal of the other sites and giving time, you know, to work these issues out?
There's probably no downside for the charter office. But there is a downside for us, because, one, we were asked to create a transition plan and to include it as part of our charter. And we did that. And we did it, we're overachievers, we overdid it, exactly what was asked, we did. There's assurance there, by voting for option two, that you will allow us, at least to the end of the term, for the lease. That's a key piece, because that's huge money, among other things. It's extremely expensive to close out charters. If you vote for option three, as I understand it, it could be possible that you're going to close everything as of July 1st.
But Mary, what I'm suggesting is, come back to us in a couple of months, and let's take up again the question of renewal of the other sites. And I don't know, a couple of months is off the top of my head, but give time, you know, to work through these issues.
And that's what option two would do exactly.
Well, no, it doesn't.
Yes, it does.
No, well, I don't agree. Option two gives you a five-year renewal on all of the sites.
No, it doesn't. Look at page 499 to 500. Did you review the transition plan?
There's been a couple of questions by Dr. Evans and trustee Barrera, and general counsel Dr. Donovan had a couple of statements to make to bring some further clarification to the discussion that's just been brought up by two of the board members.
Thank you, thank you. There's a couple of issues, really three. One is, Dr. Evans raised the issue of local control and accountability, and that is a lot about what this is about. These are, the locations that we're requiring be transitioned into either closure or authorization by their home district or county-wide charter are located as far away as Carlsbad and San Marcos. And when we suggested to the ADEO personnel that they simply move those facilities in district, the response that we received was that those families would never come into the San Diego boundaries, which raises the question of agency and voice and participation. If they're not going to come to San Diego for school, are they going to come to meetings of the board, which are conducted in Old Town or Cerendum Valley, or sometimes as far away as Benita? The issue of whether we go with option two or three is this. Option three does not state to the other districts that we have agreed that a charter school authorized by this district can continue to operate in their boundaries. And it does not, it does not indicate to other districts that there is a clear transition plan in place. On the other hand, option three does tell the other districts that we are intending to work with them, and I can't guarantee what the result is going to be, but there are a lot of options. And the Charter School Act contemplates that if an entity wants to operate a county-wide charter, or a charter county-wide, they get county authorization. Now, it may be that that's difficult to obtain, but that really doesn't give the right to San Diego Unified or San Diego charters to set up shop in Carlsbad or San Marcos and deny those districts the opportunity to exercise their responsibilities and their right to govern their own students. What we're talking about here is not something that's going to impact the districts, the students of this district. And that's not to say that the students of other districts are not important, but their home districts do have the right and the obligation and the interest to protect them. The other thing that I'd like to point out is regarding the legality of the governance structure. Whether or not we're talking about buildings that were purchased by Charter School of San Diego, the Altus corporation is the parent corporation for ADEO. I believe that it's very important that we ensure that all of the entities that are associated with ADEO and Altus and Charter School of San Diego are operated within law. Now, I'm not saying that I believe they are not, I simply don't know based on the information that we have today. But one option would be, and I would strongly recommend, that we request a FICMAT audit from the county, we ask the county office of education to commission a FICMAT audit. And that will give us the answers that we need and the assurances that we need, that everything is all in the up and up and being operated legally.
So one question on the authorization of the charters outside the district. It's not, under option three, it's not that we would be denying a charter to these out-of-district ones. According to your legal advice, we don't have the right to authorize them to operate.
I don't believe that we do. And I will say that we didn't authorize all of them to begin with. There are some that were contained in this petition that were previously authorized under what I believe was bad advice from a prior counsel. But there are others that were authorized, there were others that were authorized, or that were opened without notice to this district, and that is a common practice statewide. We are, ourselves, engaged in very strenuous efforts to rein in the charter schools that were authorized elsewhere and operating in our district without notification to us, which is one thing that is clearly required by the Charter School Act. And so I think that it's inconsistent for us to take the position vis-à-vis other districts that that's not permissible, but then ourselves be allowing our charters to operate in other districts. And I will tell you that when we litigated the Alpine case, the charter school there, the charter school there raised the argument that we had unclean hands, because we had authorized the Altus schools to operate in other districts, and we were therefore prohibited from making the argument that Endeavor could not operate here. The court here rejected that. When I sent the letter in July, the middle of July, to the Altus network, asking that we cooperate and talk about a transition plan, it was not the only letter that I sent out. I sent a letter to other schools who happily met with us and agreed to a transition plan. I was, the response I got from the Altus schools was a letter from their lawyer setting forth the same arguments that they made in the Alpine case, which were rejected by the court here. There's a lot of talk about a Shasta case, which I believe is not directly on point. But we are, in my view, obligated to follow the order in the case that we received. It is not presidential, however, it would be inappropriate for us to basically shine on the judge that we asked to rule in our favor and continue to operate in a way that's directly contrary to what he ruled in this case. And we did not raise this point. We sought to avoid a discussion of, at a district resource centers within the county. It was raised by the other side, and we got a decision that is now unpopular, but I think it's incumbent upon us to honor the ruling that we asked for from the court and to implement what we believe to be the law.
Well, what I'm going to do is, I'm going to move option three, as recommended by the staff, with a direction that we come back within 60 days to reconsider the petition for the other sites.
Ms. Parks, do you want to mention that there was a revision to option Ms. Parks, do you want to mention that there was a revision to option three that contemplated this concept of us working, the revision from when the item had been posted to today? We changed some wording based on feedback that we were receiving even up till yesterday, making option three along those lines. And Susan can give some more information on that.
Thank you. As part of the multiple meetings that have occurred between the district and ADEO, we didn't want to restrict it to 60 days just by way, or any particular number. Our charter revision form is available to all our charter schools 365 days a year so that they're not bound to rush to participate in a lease or launch a site that would not be beneficial to students. So we believe option three contemplates that they would always be, ADEO and all of our charter schools would always be available to have that option. Our caveat or our concern is that any additional sites, any changes in sites, would need to come to our board at an open public meeting so that we would know where they are and that we could observe them and provide oversight of them. So we would respectfully concur that our language already includes that consideration and that the amendment not necessarily be bound by a numeric date so that our charters are afforded full flexibility.
I appreciate that. I think my interest in the 60 days, however, is I don't feel ready to have a final resolution on either granting renewal of charters that are outside of our district's boundaries, which I do believe is inconsistent with the petition, with the position that this district has, has taken and which I believe is the correct position that our district has taken. Districts should not be authorizing charter schools to operate in other districts. We don't want other districts to authorize charters to operate in our district. We shouldn't be authorizing charters to operate in other districts. So I don't want to commit to doing that tonight. I certainly don't want to commit, you know, to a, to a resolution that forces ADEO to rush into a transition plan to potentially close. I'd prefer, again, that's the business of school boards in other districts. I'd certainly like to see as much as possible these other sites to continue and not be closed. That's not our consideration, but I don't want to force ADEO into rushing into transition plans. So what I'd like to see is come back to this board with some consideration of what happens to these other sites in a timely enough manner that it allows for proper transition, you know, moving forward into the, into the next school year. So I think the proper position for us tonight is to authorize renewal of the, for all the right reasons, all the great work that ADEO is doing, to authorize renewal of the sites within our district, which is our right to do. And then to come back and reconsider, you know, within 60 days what's going to happen with the other sites.
Let me understand the, the motion because I understand, you know, approving the, the in-district ones now. But you've said that for the district to be consistent, we can't authorize charters outside the district. But, and we also need a good transition plan, but also it sounds like you're saying to come back to see if we would authorize outside the district.
Yeah, because, and I appreciate it. It's a good, it's a good question, but there's interests that we're balancing here.
Right, right.
There's the interest of our, of our district staying with the principle that we, but there's also the interest of what happens to the other ADEO sites and the interest of what happens with those students. So I want to figure out what's the right balance. It feels like there's a conversation to be had between the leadership of ADEO and the district. That's not fully, that's not, that conversation has not been completed. So I'd like to create, you know, an opportunity for that conversation.
And I guess one other aspect would be to, whether ADEO is doing that or we're doing it, is to inform the other districts.
Right, yes.
To go to X district and say, look at, we, you know, there's this charter that's been operating in your district. We're not planning to authorize renewed charters outside of our district. What do you want to do with your students that are there?
Essentially have that conversation with the county office as well. We've got a good, we've got a good program that's operating. It's, it's a program that the portion within our district, we renewed.
Right.
So, you know, we would encourage, you know, those other, either the county office or the, or the other districts to, to work with ADEO to, yeah.
It seems as if-
I'm, I'm going to second the motion for two reasons. One, because I wholeheartedly want to renew the, all the ADEO charter schools in San Diego. That's the first reason why I support the motion. The second reason is because I believe that through more collaboration and discourse, we can make sure that we are doing the best we can for the children in the out-of-district learning centers and come up with a, hopefully, a better, concrete transition period. Whether that is, ends up being a transition period where we honor those leases or where, whether we have some other arrangement, maybe one or two of those sites can be relocated, maybe one or two of those sites can be absorbed or transferred to another district. But I think that we need to make sure that, that after this, after this vote, if this passes, if Trustee Barrera's motion passes, I think we really need to put our heads together and make sure we do what's right and take care of these out-of-district learning centers because if we just shut them all down and they don't have time to transfer or a tran, a transition period, then we know the fact that that's going to cost ADEO, I believe, over a million dollars, 1.4 million dollars. And that's not going to come out of San Diego Unified's pocket. That's going to come out of the pockets of all of the kids in San Diego ADEO charter schools. So we, I think we want to try to mitigate that, the cost of that transition by coming back to the board with a transition period that honors and recognizes that. Not to say that, that we, that we shouldn't renew them for some period of time. And this is the other issue where I think there's, you know, some legal questions that are going around that, you know, if I'm on the board of, of a, of a school district and I am aware of an out-of-district charter operating here, but there's a transition period and there's an, an end coming, then I think I'm not going to sue because there's already effort to mitigate the, the transgression. And I think that legally, there's something there. But, you know, we, I've heard, we've heard that past council has said it's legal. We've heard the current council said it's not legal. We've heard different opinions. And I, I was just kind of wanting to, you know, I don't know if now's the time to discuss this or not, but I, I just want to second the motion.
Did you?
What I hear is, is a, an agreement to the end, that we want to have charters that are within the law. And, and I recognize the, the difference of opinion in past boards, current boards within the legal system itself. And it's an issue that attorneys are working out and eventually judges will decide. So that, but we're, we're here and now and, and that's being, being, being debated. And, and, but I do want to acknowledge the effort to collaborate and to share, I mean, to collaborate and to come up with, with a, a solution that's beneficial here to everyone And it seems like we're, in a sense, is there a reason to make a decision tonight? And, and, and the reason I ask that is that we're, we have this halfway point. And, you know, one, this motion is like a halfway, let's get, let's get those we can do now, do others later. And that creates, you know, some anxiety. And, and in the, and in the meantime, staff works things out with both leadership come together. Is there not a point where we could postpone to a, a action until a, a time certain to give staff and, and the leaders from both sides to clarify and then come back with a, with a consensus recommendation?
Are you, just to understand your comment, are you suggesting, as opposed to Trustee Barrera's motion, that we not take any action tonight, that we postpone all action? Is that what you're saying?
Well, postponing actions for a reason, for a purpose.
Right, but I mean, but as opposed to dividing it up like-
That was, that was my question.
Okay.
It's a question, I'm not, it's a question to postpone. And I'm not sure what impact that has on the-
Of course, we, staff would defer to general counsel. However, more recent regulations regarding renewal, if a renewal is not disacted on whether approval or denial within a 60-day period, it becomes automatically renewed in full. So the option three allows staff and our district to stand behind and support the sites that are lawful and not leave those pending. And so we think this is a change in the way charter petitions are processed. Renewals did not used to have that stopwatch attached to them. And there's also, of course, the uncertainty component for those students at ADEO and the staff at ADEO. So option three does support not only the ADEO program, but ensuring that these seven sites get the full green light for the full five-year term and are not in any kind of limbo with respect to that piece.
And the language that staff added to, to option three says, direct staff to continue to collaborate with ADEO in an effort to ensure a smooth transition with remaining sites, which I'm hearing is really important, that there's a smooth transition and it doesn't happen overnight, somebody's closed. That's why we added that language to contemplate that. I think, Trustee Barrera, you're just adding a 60-day timeline to it, but you're agreeing with staff's recommendation around, we added the direct staff to continue to collaborate with ADEO in an effort for smooth transition. That's what we want. And the idea about being compliant with the law and wanting to be consistent with what we've done versus the tensions that we're managing here, that's why we revised our option three just in the, since this item went live, we revised that to, to be clear that have you, in accepting option three, directing us to collaborate for smooth transition is important to us.
Right, so I'll just finish my comment. And then, so what, what, I appreciate the dialogue and the clarification. It sounds like option three is really saying yes to those things we can say yes to.
Yeah.
And it, and it really postpones those things that we can't say yes to.
And it directs us to collaborate.
So basically does, and in fact functions as a postponement. But it gives certainty to those schools that we currently have that are within our district that-
Yes.
That a council agrees, or determines are, are legal. And we could give them certainty and move on, letting the others know, we're not talking about closure here. We're not talking about anti-charter.
Exactly.
We're not talking about turning our backs on, on services and programs that are high quality and having an effective impact on kids. We're really talking about a governance issue, I mean, an ownership, a, a, a structure issue in terms of where charters are located and who should be the, the authorizing agent. And, and that would be, that would be, that would have, we'd have that opportunity to have that discussion with those charters within, within the near future. And, and your motion is that let's take care of that within 30, within 60 days. Do those we can do now, handle the others within 60 days. Not talking closure, not talking red light. We're talking openness and discussion.
I don't know, did you have some comments?
No, I'm sorry.
So, ADEO has had a very strong track record, a track, a proven track record of success for our students. And so what I'm, what I hear you saying is that we want to ensure that that continues. And there's also an opportunity, not only to collaborate, but to use the relationships that we have to support the success of those charters that operate outside of our district. And that's really what we call a partnership. And I, I think I heard Mary Bixby say that word, your word is bond. And so our word is bond too in terms of supporting the success of all the students that you serve, that we serve in, in our partner districts as well. So this is an opportunity to demonstrate extending that collaboration, that partnership. So we're, what I hear my fellow board trustees saying is that we're committed to that. Give us an opportunity to demonstrate that. Tonight, we're going to approve those that are within our district, but we are committed to working with you to ensure that those that operate, operate outside the district are successful as well, to the best of our ability. So with that said, we have a motion and a second. And can we please vote?
Okay.
So that vote was unanimous. All the ADEO charter schools in San Diego Unified have been renewed for five more years. And the other schools, we will look at and work on a transition plan in collaboration to make sure that those issues are addressed.
Sorry, I, I'll move staff recommendation on item F8.
Because that movement means nothing unless we have a second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you.
I think so, yeah, they said in San Diego.
What, are we trying, are we on?
Did you have to, we have, we have to ask. We have a motion, we have a second. I don't think there, are there any questions? I don't think so. So do you want to, to vote on F8? We have a motion and a second, any discussion? No? Okay, please vote.
It's just a standard material revision. We're moving staff recommendation.
All right. Okay.
And I will move staff recommendation on item F9.
Okay, all right. Any discussions? Okay, please vote. Okay, that's done. We have speakers on F9? Okay, so we have to take that back. Okay, F8, Elevate Elementary passed unanimously. And now we're on to F9. I believe we have speakers.
F8 was the revised board composition that was passed.
Revised, yeah. Actually, okay. Okay. Okay, so the speaker, so the speakers that we have on F9, Keeler Leadership Academy, are Susan Prado, America Diaz Inclan, Ava Contreras, I think, Bernard Young, Joel Christman, Christman. And you can come up and speak in any order. You have 10 minutes total. And we ask that if students are speaking, they speak first. 10 minutes total for the call group.
Okay. Hello, my name is Susan and I came here to talk about building a high school and to give a choice to our middle school kids to go to Keeler for high school. I, and I want to stay here for high school. I am in sixth grade. I've been here at Keeler this year. I love Keeler. I'm an old school, I never had good grades. Right now, I am in honor roll. And we have the best principal, Mr. Christman. Also the best counselor, Mr. Chavez. He's, he helps us and he also has peer mediators. And they are also great. And I say we should build a high school. Some people don't have money to go to far places. Also, parents help our school and we love them. We have uniforms and I like having uniforms because students don't get bullied.
I say this because in the community, people like to have options, and I believe that Keeler could be a great options for students and parents. Like other students and parents, I feel great about this idea. It would be a wonderful idea for students to stay in our awesome community to have a high school. If KLA opened a high school, I would totally go. Why? Because KLA has given me an opportunity, an opportunity to stay in a great community to have a great high school. I think parents will also like this idea because they are used to the area and the school. KLA also has to offer great education. So in conclusion, I think that Keeler Leadership Academy should add a high school to their campus. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for, oh, I was just going to say, and thank you for sticking with this so long. I know it's late, and that's impressive, advocating for your school, yes.
Exactly, I was going to say. Waiting until nine o'clock to speak, that's pretty impressive for both students. They get extra minutes.
Good evening, Superintendent Martin, Board President Foster, Vice President Evans, and Board members and representatives. My name is Eva Contreras. I'm the parent of a student who graduated KLA when it first opened in 2005. He was part of KLA's history-making graduating, graduating class of 2006. And I'm here because my son shared with me that because KLA had prepared him for high school, he was able to maintain a 3.5 GPA and higher at some, in some semesters at University City High School. This happened almost 11 years ago. And I'm most certain that should you approve KLA opening a high school, there will be many more success stories like my son's. I currently have an eighth grade student who will be graduating in, in June, and a third grade student who's also here with us tonight. I will, it will please me to know that my eighth grade student will continue with academic rigor and college preparatory courses that KLA offers, which will certainly best prepare her for the university of her choice. What KLA has offered the community and all of its graduating students in the last 11 years has changed our community tremendously. And I can only hope that bigger and better changes will come should you approve this request. Good night.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of board. Thank you very much. I have prepared something long and drawn out, but in respect for everyone's time, I've narrowed it down a bit. A lot of people right now are making the move to the more local scene within their communities, especially in the smaller communities, especially here in San Diego City. There, we're moving towards locally sourced, locally sourced food, as the board has self-done with lunch and everything, looking for food from local growers, encouraging people to shop from local businesses. And within our community, KLA is a local school. Our intention here is to, to grow in that way, as a local school, and grow in that way the best supports the students that we have within our local community. The schools that we're being compared to have their own unique merits. Ours is that we are a small school, and are intended to stay small and stay local, and stay oriented and committed to rearing the whole student within that school. We're asking you to approve our charter, to approve our, our request for moving into a high school, so that we can, even though, grow to our full potential, stay small and provide the best we can for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, board members. My name is Joel Christman. I'm the executive director at Keeler Leadership Academy, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight in requesting that we be allowed to open upgrades nine through 12 at, on our site. And I wanted to just address some of the points that the charter office has for denial of our revision. And I, I really think that we can work with the charter office on all of these points and come up with a solution that is, that is viable for all of the points that have been mentioned there. The inconsistencies that are being referred to are due to us having a larger, or a greater enrollment this year than when we applied for revision last year. So, the, that's the reason that there's some changes in the enrollment. The enroll, we, we can, we definitely have a enrollment and a, and a design for our high school that, that we can make work on our campus. We've worked with Delawee Planning, and they did a feasibility study, and I have a, a copy of the, that study for the board tonight. The charter office may not be aware of the most recent changes that we've gone over to address all of the, all of the issues that the, that the charter office has come up with. So I want to present those to the board at this time. The top map shows how a K through 12 program could function on the campus. It shows how, if you look towards the bottom there, it shows all of the issues that were brought up in the charter staff's request, or the charter staff's referral. And so, those all have been addressed through working with the planning department, Delawee Planning, and through Prop Z funds, we are hoping to accomplish what we're asking you to approve tonight.
Okay, so my motion to support the staff recommendation, which is a denial of the revision, is certainly not intended to be permanent. I, I hear what you're saying about the work that you've done, so the encouragement would be for you to continue to work with our charter school office, let them, that the, the additional work that you've done, and perhaps, you know, at a later point, come back to us with a reconsideration of this question.
I would concur in, in seconding it, because we're basing it on the information that the staff had at the time, and it's, there's always opportunities in the future to revise, or add additional information.
And so if the board votes to accept staff's recommendation, and then you resubmit with the revised information and the responses to staff concern, please ask to go at the front of the agenda next time?
Okay.
Okay?
The, the only caveat is that we are, the, part of the plan for the high school comes with Prop Z funding. And so that, that's kind of interconnected with the, with the plan. So, we have, we're going to be going before the Prop Z and Charter Committee soon. So, how will we make sure that we're able to get these things done before going through the, to the Prop Z Charter Committee?
When are, when are you, just out of curiosity, when are you scheduled to go before the, the committee?
We don't have a, I'm not aware of a date yet, but it's coming up real soon.
Well, I mean, I guess the other issue about Prop Z and so forth, it's, it's on a continuing basis over the next several years. So just like the petition could be submitted this year or next year, the same thing, every year there will be renewals on, I mean, proposals for charter school monies also.
I, I would think that, yes, absolutely. And then I would just think that you would want to address these thoroughly and continue to work with our charter school office, because the same concerns that they have here are the same concerns that, that the committee's going to have. So you, you really need to address this first. Yeah.
Right. I suppose, and, I don't know if this is an appropriate suggestion either to Keeler or to the staff, would you be interested in tonight withdrawing your petition for a revision, rather than have it denied, and then come back and vet this? And I, yeah?
A revision is unlike a renewal. So, the petitioner, Keeler absolutely could withdraw it from the board's consideration at any point in time, and then our board could decide to accept it, or as in past board actions, decide that it's on the table, it has been vetted, processed, and it's important to have those findings approved. But with regard to revisions, there's no restriction as there is with renewals.
Yeah. But there's new information to address staff concerns. And so, you know, I think Trustee Barrera brings up a very good point, you know, how do you, how do you take staff concerns, which are legitimate, and the new information and the changes to their proposal and their plan that addresses those concerns, and how do we marry that up? Do we vote no, and then they resubmit? Do they withdraw? And then meet with you guys to kind of discuss those challenges, to then bring it back to the board at a future date? What, what, what do you think, in your opinion, you've been doing this for a long time, what do you think would be the best scenario?
You made me feel very old all of a sudden.
Just a couple of years.
Our doors always open, and frankly, we're always at the door of our charters every year. So respectfully, we would say this is the finding with the information presented, and the charters do time when they come to us. So material vision was not on a timeline set by staff. The charter said this is the right time. I did receive my initial feasibility study. And so, as with new petitions, one of the issues, and I know our board has had the experience of seeing the same petitioner come back, and so, nothing about a denial prevents a future submission. However, withdrawing findings once they've been posted does promote, as we have experienced, kind of a back and forth, you know? Submission, it's recommended for denial, withdrawal. So that, that's one of the factors to consider, but I, I just say that from experience.
So, still, the, the motion's on the floor to, to go with staff recommendation? Okay. For tonight.
But I didn't hear the answer. There, there was a request. Did you want to pull?
Well, that, let me just ask Susan, and could you say what you said last there about what a, about us retracting the revision?
If our board were to approve staff's recommendation to deny it, it would become an official board action with respect to Keeler and the district's relationship. It would not prevent Keeler from resubmitting with the information that was presented today. If Keeler requested to our board to withdraw it, as it has been agendized, our board has in the past with charter items, accepted withdrawals and also declined to accept them for the purpose of saying that once something is formally submitted, we don't want to engage in any kind of withdrawal after the findings have been made and vetted and considered and motions have been made. So I believe none of the scenarios are procedurally fatal to this proposal in the future, but those are just some of the considerations.
Okay. So I would say then, considering the fact that, I think we could still work with the charter office to come up with a solution, and we would like to withdraw the petition.
Okay. Yes. Can we please vote? That passes unanimously?
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, thank you very, very much. And, and thank you for staying up late, and I hope you did your homework while you were here.
Madam President?
Yes.
If it, if it would behoove my fellow trustees and Superintendent Cindy Martin, I would like to make a brief statement.
Yes.
In honor of hashtag Giving Tuesday, I would like to present this violin in memory of my father-in-law, Fred McKinley Mock Jr. He was a Marine during the Korean War and is resting peacefully at Fort Rosecrans here in San Diego. His mother, Bernice Mock, was a music teacher in Oklahoma City Public Schools for her, the entirety of her life. So, the reason why I'm presenting this violin is because San Diego Unified needs music instruments.
Can you take that out?
So, so I would, I would like this hashtag Giving Tuesday opportunity for other people that may have musical instruments in their garage, closet, attic, to please bring them into San Diego Unified. Already today, I've had an individual say that he has a trumpet at home, he hasn't played since he was in high school, and he's going to bring it in also. We have kids that need musical instruments. So please, if you know anybody with a musical instrument at home, please bring it in and donate it to the San Diego Unified School District for our children. Thank you.
And with that, hashtag Giving Tuesday, good evening. All right.